Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the School Board Special Work Session Video Conference. Tonight's facilitator will be Superintendent Corey McIntyre. Pursuant to the Minnesota statutes 13DO21 and the current state of emergency due to COVID-19, this work session will be conducted via livestream. Consistent with current state and federal pandemic guidance, Superintendent McIntyre, myself have determined that due to the health pandemic and emergency declaration, a meeting format allowing for open in-person attendance is not practical or prudent. The result is unfeasible for at least one board member, the superintendent, or general counsel to be present at the regular meeting location. It's also not feasible for members of the public to attend the regular meeting location. Members of the public can watch on this livestream, and an archived copy of the video recording of this meeting will be available on the district website. The 25th is our next regular school board meeting. That is planned to be in person, which coincides with our teachers and staff coming back into the buildings. With that, our mission tonight, mission overall, is to inspire and prepare all students with the confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams, contribute to community, and engage in a lifetime of learning. And the purpose of tonight's meeting is to, in the work session, is to build trust and teamwork to exchange the information and, when applicable, to provide direction in order to facilitate efficient and effective decision-making at regular board meetings. We have four main topics tonight: the Monitoring Report A through F, the opening of a school for 2020 planning, strategic planning, the operational plan, and board calendar; Monitoring Report D, an update on family and community engagement plan; and Monitoring Report D, the update on Equity Context Analysis Program, the ECAP. And hopefully, the outcomes this evening will be that board members will receive the reports and updates on opening of school, 2020 planning, operational plan, the board calendar, and family and community engagement plan, and the Equity Context Analysis process. With that, I will hand it over to Superintendent McIntyre. Corey?
Thank you, Chair O'Stapi. We have a lot of folks joining us tonight, so we will not go through introductions of our entire district team. But we usually do introductions of our board members. Could each board member just quickly chime in and introduce themselves? There's a lot of squares on the computer tonight, so maybe Chair O'Stapi, you've done that already. Can we move on to one of the next board members?
This is Director Simons. I'm here.
Director Dawson Walton.
Jackie Moskiter-Jones.
I am Director Depp.
Thank you all very much. And we have many members of our district team, and some of them are actually double-booked and coming in and out of other meetings tonight. I know Brian is running our foundation meeting tonight as well, so you'll see him at times and not at others. Thank you, Brian, for that. So by way of starting out here, we have a full agenda tonight, so we're going to work really hard to make sure we get through our agenda items. And tonight, starting with this opening of school year, we had a robust conversation last week about the decision to start in our hybrid model. And we, tonight, our goal is to give you an update on really the progress over the last week. I know our board understands that our team's been really working around the clock as fast as we can to continue that planning on not only that model, but our other two models that we worked on over the summer. And tonight, we're going to give you a briefing-style update. There's an immense amount of information on our website and on our frequently asked questions and other documents that we're building. And so tonight's going to be more of a verbal briefing update and give you a sense for the progress that's been made and the work in front of us. And that's really the focus of each report here. And I'm going to, we're going to start at a higher level with some leveled reports, like at the elementary, secondary level, and early childhood will come later on, and then get into just a little bit of specific updates on departments and what we're doing at the building level, too. I do want to start with some background and just kind of set the foundation again for what's in front of us. Last week, our goal was to have a decision to, in the interest of time, to help our families and staff, give them as much time as possible for planning for the start of the year with clear direction. And I just need to start right at the beginning. Last week, when I said that this is such a complicated and complex situation, it seems to get more complex every day. And there's no real clear or easy answers here, but we are digging in hard to continue to collect information as we move forward and look at every possible solution, knowing that there's a real possibility that we're going to be shifting and pivoting, possibly multiple times during the year if needed. And with that, what we hear is a broad range of perspectives and beliefs, and with it, a lot of emotion and high expectations. Very challenging for that. So we continue to monitor the activity of the virus. I'll talk about that in a minute. And really kind of dig into our models in alignment with the executive order of the governor and the Department of Education and Department of Health in the parameters that we've been given, and all Minnesota districts have been given, around the three learning models. So truly digging into those specifics. Last week, we covered the fact that there are many factors taken into consideration as we're making decisions, and we launched that initial work of our hybrid planning. And I have been, over the course of the week, consulting regularly with MDE and MDH and our Hennepin County partners around the information and data that we need to continue to monitor the ever-changing landscape that this virus is presenting to us. I always like to remind my team and everyone that we work with the commissioner and her team mostly at the state level. They ultimately have authority, and they can direct us. But right now, this is more of a collaborative approach. And we know, as we covered last week, that districts can move into more restrictive models, even if the countywide data puts districts in a certain model as a starting point. So that is something we're continuing to monitor as well. You're going to hear tonight about our Distance Learning Academy, which has a really strong attendance request for that. And that is that option that, at any point, families can request that distance learning option. And really, we're trying to offer that throughout the entire year. So just by a brief update, as I continue to kind of set the stage for our team here, districts are using, or we've been directed to use, the biweekly case rate data of the virus by county. And today, that's basically giving the number of cases over a 14-day period per 10,000 people. And the recent trend that we looked at, that we had last week, put us in a hybrid-for-all-students mode, or model, which we recommended last night and the board supported. And today, just this afternoon, got another data point. We haven't had much time to look at it. We went from a rate of 23.34 to 23.76, so just a .343 increase. However, we know, and we're learning more every day, that there's much more context to our county data and our city impact. And we're learning much more about that, and I've been digging into that more deeply with our Department of Health and our city administration, and have another meeting with Hennepin County tomorrow morning, and another meeting in the afternoon tomorrow with the Department of Health and their epidemiologists to really get a strong situational awareness around this in our local situation that may not be completely reflected in our countywide numbers. So it is complex. We're looking hard to even disaggregate that even further and see if we can get some analysis around racial breakdowns, too. And I think what we're learning, too, is our county and state partners are just, they're getting more and more information as well. So it's a developmental process, for sure. And I just want to stress that, as much as we launched that model last week, we're continuing to evaluate things, and I'm going to continue to say we need to be ready to pivot when we have evidence to say we should. And I believe that, right now, getting this week's data and probably next Thursday and Friday puts us in position to, for me to come back to you on the 25th and either recommend, you know, we continue with what the board supported, or do we pivot and make a change based on what we've learned over the next two weeks? And I can tell you that in talking with the metro superintendents this morning, we're all in that space. We're all, what we knew this week is different than last week, and what we'll know next week is also going to be different as well. And I wish I could be more certain for people. I don't want to, you know, we want to breed confidence in where we're moving and moving forward, but we also need to be sensitive to the changing elements of this. So tonight, what you're really going to hear is, right now, we are on a path to make sure we build out and are ready on our hybrid model for the start of the year. And even if it's not the start of the year, at some point in the year, we're going to need that, and we need to make sure that that is worked all the way through. You're going to, you're going to see, I believe, we have a well-developed, high-quality plan. The challenge is the window of time all school districts have to operationalize things and really get it to the building level and have time to train our staff, to have staff feel comfortable with all the precautions and safety requirements and teaching and learning requirements that need to go into place. And if you think about transportation and student schedules and staffing assignments, getting people trained and prepared and confident, we are really tight. And I will, right now, my best thinking, and I'm okay saying this publicly, is if we still continue with our hybrid model, it's very likely I'll be recommending we start the year a week later than we had planned just to ensure our staff and our families all are confident in what they are expected to do when students come back. And we're not alone. Districts around the metro are considering a little bit later start, or at least in the process of evaluating that. And I know, in conversation with our team, I think you're going to hear it tonight, there's confidence in the plan, but we are still needing time. It's just a simple matter of time to get, because many things are dependent on a prior step happening. We're also continuing, and I'm just going to say again, continuing to evaluate our information at the county and local level, and that could shift my recommendation. And I need to keep that door open, because we all have seen that we are, our district is a part of a hotspot in the state, and it might be one of the hottest spots in the state as far as the trending of the data around cases. And we're still just trying to really get a consistent understanding of that pattern. So I'll talk more about that, I guess, at the end. What I'm going to do is facilitate a conversation with our leaders to give you kind of a sense for what we've been able to accomplish in the last week, what's still right in front of us that needs to be solved. And I think you're going to sense, you know, what we're up against to get done in time. And I'm going to lead us right through a number of different, start with our hybrid model. We'll talk about Distance Learning Academy. I want you to hear some specific information from some departments, including curriculum, special education, our student services, our EL and tribal considerations. We'll move into our kind of our operational areas of health and safety, facilities, nutrition, transportation, technology. And then we'll get to an update on human resources and staffing, our communications plan, and sports and activities. That's been also a big topic here the last few days. Get an update on our athletics and activities, and then ending up with an update from Ron on the budget situation that continues to evolve as well, excuse me. So I'm going to facilitate, each member of the team is going to give you a quick update on each of those areas, and we'll get through them. To paint a picture for the broad scope and the broad areas that we're working on, knowing that, for one example, our building-level teams are about a week away, probably maybe early by early next week, solidifying the building-level plans. And so I know our staff are very much wanting that detailed information, and I know building-level teams, you'll hear this tonight, have already started meeting to operationalize what that means at their school and the details, and beginning to have staff meetings around implementation. So again, time, it's just getting through all the steps in time. So I'm going to start with giving you kind of an overview of what we've been working on, what we've accomplished at the elementary and secondary level. I'll start with Steve Flesk at the elementary level, then I'll have Kelly Parpart talk a little bit about our secondary work, and then have Michael Lehan talk about the departments that he oversees and leading into those directors, getting you a little more depth there. So we'll start with Steve. And Steve, could you just share with our team, when it comes to our hybrid planning, the work you've been doing with our elementary leaders and staff?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Corey. Good evening, Chair O'Stapi, board directors, cabinet, and our listening audience. I'm going to share with you just a couple of brief points of what we've been working on, but I also do want to give the caveat that what I'm sharing, too, is also happening at the secondary level, but Kelly will fill you in on some additional details as well. So the assistant superintendents have really been involved, including myself, in supporting the logistics required for the hybrid planning. I think Corey lined it out quite well as we've been moving forward. A number of things we were working on over the last few weeks, but now with more intensity. So for example, you know, in preparation for the opening, the safe opening, we've been supporting the schools in learning about and creating their school site plans. So as we mentioned last week in our update, we were setting up, in collaboration with operations, some training sessions for our school leaders as well as school teams. And so that occurred last week. And in that case, we've been working alongside, as operations has, in really helping the principals begin to operationalize the many logistical challenges that they have in terms of preparing their classrooms for that hybrid model. So as I mentioned, they're not only receiving our support, but also there's an operation team that has been scheduled and individually meeting with each of the school leaders. And so, you know, as you can imagine, that this is challenging everyone, and we think, we have to think differently about space and programming through this lens of COVID-preparedness. So that's been a key element of what's been happening. April, August 21st is our deadline for those school plans to be done, and we're moving along. But as I said, this is causing us all to think differently about space. In addition to that, we've launched a work group that is developing a plan to potentially add additional in-person time for students who may need greater support in the hybrid model. Students receiving special ed, EL services, and interventions will be considered. So this was a recommendation for future planning that came from our summer planning group. So we anticipate, in this case, this work wrapping up sometime in September, and with a phased approach. So we're working with a group of leaders, including transportation. And we're also going to be seeking teacher input in this planning. Another key element of that we've been working on is working alongside Antonine, as Corey said, you'll hear more about DLA here, but just working alongside and supporting the design and implementation of DLA as this has unfolded. So a couple of those points are, you know, we're supporting and identifying, you know, just additional resources for the leadership of the academy. So working in collaboration, also the selection process for the administration. So as you can imagine, we're building quite a significant, large K-12 school. And then certainly working alongside and identifying teacher participation in collaboration with EMO for those work groups that are going to be really digging in over the next few weeks. Another key point really has been working with operations and our school leaders regarding the logistics behind assigning A and B groups at both our elementary and secondary levels. And this work has been going on for a number of weeks, but as you can imagine, it's going to take on a whole different level, too, as we begin to work with the students that are electing into the DLA. And so another piece of significant work and conversations that have started and will continue will be around what will then be the staffing implications related across the district related to DLA. So those are kind of the key elements of what we've been working on as we prepare for the hybrid model. Kelly?
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, Chair O'Stapi and board members. So Steve really covered the big rocks of the work that we are supporting principals and that the principals are currently engaged in. But in, really, we can't lose sight of the fact that within each one of those rocks are really the nuances of the day-to-day work. And those are the tens and tens and tens of logistics. I'm going to start with master schedules, especially at the secondary level. The logistics around master scheduling are absolutely too far-reaching to get into here. But I'm sure that you and our viewers can absolutely understand the logistics of scheduling for especially our high school buildings, that number of students. You couple that with the Distance Learning Academy with thousands of students, and those students are going to be pulled out of our regular schools. So that drastically changed the landscape of developing a master schedule, along with the fact that a number of teachers then, you know, will also be pulled from our regular school buildings. So that drastically changes the landscape of them being able to develop a master schedule. So that piece in and of itself is huge. It's huge. The staffing really goes hand in hand and obviously intersects with the master schedule. So working very closely with HR to figure out the staffing implications for our buildings, working very, very closely with BJ Ermater, our K-12 coordinator for DLTL, and figuring out how many teachers are we going to pull from our current sites to staff the Distance Learning Academy? And yet, we can't decimate the teaching staff at those sites. We still need to be able to offer the courses that need to be offered there. So I view it in my mind as this humongous puzzle, and all these pieces need to fit in, and none of them can be missing. So that's a big piece of what Steve and I are working with the principals on. And then there's all those little nuances, as I was talking about. They're trying to figure out how can we do student orientations and meet all the social distancing guidelines? How do we do that for thousands of students and still make it a really meaningful experience? How do we hold our fall learning conferences that we hold for our families? Again, with all the social distancing guidelines, how are we able to do that very possibly and likely through remote, remotely, and yet make it really meaningful for the families to really inform them about their child's upcoming educational experiences? And then we go to things such as new teacher workshops, Chromebook deployment. We have that little thing like 21,000 Chromebooks that have to be, or Chromebooks and iPads that need to be redistributed. So we're working on plans with that. And I know Amy, our district-level principal, will touch on this further, but we're also working on all the nuances of activities and athletics. And I'll tell you what, I learned more than I ever needed to know about how we could possibly, you know, still do band and other things with masks on, with a slit cut through, and then a mask for the end of the instrument, so nothing can come out of the end of the trumpet, or the trombone, or the sax. And one would think you could have three-hour conversations about that, but we do, and we're still looking for more information to make the best decision. And then we go to things like late buses. We always offer late buses Tuesday through Thursday. Do we need to look at offering them on Monday? And then, do we have the capacity? So within all those big rocks are just so many nuanced pieces that take a lot, a lot of time, and that we have to include in our planning in order to get up and running.
So just a couple of themes there. Well, actually, I want, I would like Michael to jump in here. So, Michael, you're just, none of my screen is in the same spot. Michael Lehan, can you jump in with a summary of your support for our work, too?
Absolutely. Thank you, Superintendent McIntyre. And good evening to each of our champions for educational excellence. It's great to spend the evening with each of you and certainly our community. I guess what I would say to the folks who are on my direct reports is that I just celebrate each of them and their commitment to doing better than what we did before. Certainly, there are some opportunities that we took to learn from what we did during trimester three, and we're using this time to be reflective and elevate our practice in a meaningful way to ensure that we create equitable opportunities for students and certainly their families. What that might look like, from Rev, he's looking at some of our EL data that we had come back to ensure that we have some NGs that we have to satisfy. But we also know that we need to be intentional about our communication so we can engage the vast community that we have in a meaningful way so they feel valued in the way that they are to enrich our community as they're part of our fabric of what makes Oseo exceptional. Jeremy, one of the pieces that we learned is that there's a learning curve for parents as well. So one of the pieces, and he's going to talk more about it, but he's looking at developing some backpacks for our families so they can learn how to navigate. And we've kind of reduced some of the tools that we're using to streamline the opportunity that they have to engage meaningfully and be champions for their scholars' brilliance. Amy is working diligently around athletics, and she's also working diligently around what does behavior look like, what does attendance look like in some of these pieces, so she can come alongside our building-level principals and be a thought partner for them as we kind of enter into the unknown, if you will. Kate is looking at some of our sped. One of the things that's very exceptional is with our DLA, we're seeing a lot of interest around some of our students who carry an IEP. We want to make sure that that experience is a meaningful experience and be reflective in that regard as well. Beyond that, we also know that we have to Maslow before we bloom. To that extent, we're looking at PBIS. How are we engaging our PBIS? How are we making sure that we're deploying counselors and making sure that any of the trauma that might come along with the realities of the merger of George Floyd in addition to COVID, how are we making sure that we're setting the stage for high levels of success for our scholars? One of the people who I did not mention is Lisa Hartman, who has also been, is a direct report of mine, who's been doing a phenomenal job supporting principals and some of the work that's being done to kind of sift through the nuances of launching for the school year. So those are some of my direct reports and what they're working on, and you'll certainly hear more about them, from them here shortly.
So before we, thank you, team, and I'm getting great echo here. Thanks for muting. Two themes I just want to summarize before we move on to Anthony's talking more about our progress with Distance Learning Academy. Our focus, as you heard, is on the instructional models and the details around how to make that schedule and all the instructional elements work. More importantly, priorities on safety for our staff and our students. And we're about a week away, again, you heard that deadline of the 21st, being able to take those safety plans and work them through with our teachers at the site level and really apply them to the uniqueness of every school. So we're in the middle of that process right now, and those are critical pieces to be in place by the end of next week.
Corey, I'm sorry, can I just add one additional thing that I think it's important to know that the schools are also working on, if I may? One of the other pieces of work that we're focusing on right now with the Distance Learning Academy and then maybe pulling staff is that we could have teachers that are teaching different subject areas. So with, or different classes within their subject area in a building. So maybe every year, you've taught junior English for the last few years, but now when we have to call certain teachers out of there for the Distance Learning Academy, you might be moving to teaching 10th grade English Language Arts. And our principals are very cognizant that the teachers are going to need time to prep and prepare for that and to be teaching what could be an entirely new class for the first time ever, and being able to have the appropriate amount of time to get ready to do that. And again, everything builds on everything else. So until we know all the students, where they're coming from, and where the staff are coming from, then we get to that next piece of the puzzle of then trying to figure out, will staff need to be possibly teaching different things and being cognizant of providing them time to prepare to do so?
And certainly at the elementary level, grade levels as well.
There's that theme of time again, right? So that's a critical piece. So we are very proud of the Distance Learning Academy effort here. It's been, we've seen really strong enrollment that Anthony's going to talk about here, and I wanted him to give you an update on where we're at in the process of getting all the required elements in place. Thanks, Anthony.
Good evening, everyone. So as you've heard, DLA used a few times amongst our leaders. That is really our acronym that we're using for Distance Learning Academy, which, again, is our year-long distance learning option for families. So families that want that consistency of a single program for distance learning, year-long, to not have to navigate between the shift of different models throughout the school year, this is the pathway that we are providing. As you may know, the registration As you may know, the registration for currently enrolled students into that program ended at 9:00 PM yesterday. We extended that from 9:00 PM on Sunday based on additional feedback and making sure we had enough translations and communications out and reminders to families as well. Right prior to this meeting, my team finally got a clean list of students that are enrolled in there. And we have 5,011 students who are registered for the Distance Learning Academy. When we break that down by grade band or by areas, elementary, there's 2,335. Middle school, 1,147. And high school, 1,529. So as you can suspect, we are, you know, building a K through 12 school. So if you think about if you're putting a new physical school together, it's kind of the same process. Just you don't have the brick and mortar pieces in place. And typically this, this takes a, you know, a, a good few months to get everything in place. And we're trying to compact this within, you know, several weeks. So, you know, the timeline that we're working on now and, and working with very rapidly now that we have student registrations in, my team is cleaning those up. So we're figuring out how many students are registered at each grade level to determine how many sections at elementary level. At the secondary level, they are pulling all the course requests from those secondary students to run tallies on who is interested in what courses. So we can then determine which courses that we will be able to offer. And then from that, we're going to start looking at staffing. So this week we have started our staffing conversations with HR and BJ to look at what, what the staffing parameters need to look like. And as we build those sections out, how we're going to bring in the appropriate teachers and the tiered and the process for bringing those in that I'm sure Laurel will speak to as well in her section. As we move into moving forward with the staffing piece, of course, that's going to have the domino effect back at buildings. So buildings are going to be getting rosters of students on Friday. So they will be able to start identify who is not physically returning to their sites. So they can start planning around rescheduling and re-sectioning without their physical sites, which then has implications for staffing at the physical sites as well. We, it also has an implication on our A and B grouping and transportation. So we'll be getting this data over to the transportation team by the end of the day tomorrow. So we need to remove those students out from who would be receiving transportation services, which then looks at rebound, potential rebalancing in certain scenarios around those A and B day schedules. In terms of the planning and moving forward, so I, you know, I mentioned we had HR meeting around staffing. We've also been having kind of the logistical planning around school operations with a team for three weeks. So we've gotten frameworks down around start and end time. We've gotten frameworks around what, big picture, what are instructional guidelines on what those would look like? And moving into next week, we are partnering with Kelly Wilson and EMO and bringing in a group of teachers at the elementary level and the secondary level to start to get into the deep conversations about what the instructional pedagogy would look like. What is day-to-day classroom? How do we plan around prep time, collaboration time, PLC time within this model? As you also heard mentioned from Kelly and Steve, the, you know, because it is a, we are treating it like an independent school, we're in the process of hiring and staffing the leadership team. So by the end of next week, we, and we, we are planning and should have our leadership team with principal and assistant principal all identified and ready to go. Once that leadership team is in place, we're going to start working through what does welcome back to school look like for the Distance Learning Academy? What does workshop week look like for Distance Learning Academy teachers and planning all those pieces out? What additional professional development during workshop week might Distance Learning Academy teachers need that are specific to teaching within online courses? So those are kind of the, the big buckets that we are working through and processing through right now. I, I know I've had a lot of good conversations with parents that are waiting for a lot more detailed information and we are going to be generating that and getting that information out as, as soon as we can. In particular, after we meet with the teacher groups next week to kind of solidify more around what that day-to-day operations is to paint that better picture for families. As well as kind of layout, you know, options for getting food and nutrition. So families know what that looks like. And then as well as what is, you know, welcome back to school, open house, Q and A sessions look like as we get closer to those times as well. We definitely have a lot of parents that have had interest around this on what do parent groups look like? How can we connect our students within this? So those are some things that we're going to be processing through with our leadership team once that gets established. So just a lot of, a lot of moving pieces to build a K through 12 school. And as you've heard from other leaders, a lot of what's happening here because of the sheer volume is really hinging on, you know, staffing implications and course and rostering implications at our physical sites as well.
Okay, board members, I think I see you doing this, but continue to just make note of your questions. We're going to keep working through the information. So at the end you'll have the big picture and maybe some things that you're wondering will get answered along the way. Jeremy, I'd like you to touch on a little more depth on the instructional elements of curriculum instruction and assessment based on your, kind of the last week or so where we're at.
Sure. Thank you Superintendent McIntyre. Board members, I have so much to share with you. I am beyond excited to tell you about all the good things that we're doing to try to support not just our teachers, but also our families and our students in attempting to be as prepared as possible as they can for this new world that we're going to be experiencing this fall. So the first thing else that I will share with you is that I am incredibly grateful that I've had the opportunity to work with Education Minnesota and Human Resources to make a significant change to the system, Staff Development Day that we had scheduled for late April. One of the things that we're doing is that we have decided to move that day and create a flexible, comprehensive, personalized professional learning experience for teachers that will start hopefully in August and will continue throughout September in the place of that April experience. And the design behind that day will be dedicated to helping them receive the professional development that they need to be successful with some of our new technology resources, some of the existing technology tools, and some of the various platforms that we've continued to operate under in order to help really set them up to be successful for their fall planning efforts with their colleagues, with their grade level teams, with their professional learning teams, with their departments. So that's the first thing that I wanted to share with you because I'm really excited about that partnership with Education Minnesota and Human Resources because I just think it's such a powerful thing that we're trying to do in advance. And a flexible offering that we're trying to do to be responsive to the needs of teachers with their families that I'm really excited about. So teachers know about that. That information was communicated with them earlier this week. And so I apologize in advance if I should have shared that with you prior to this time, but I'm excited about it and I know others are excited about it. So I wanted to share that with you now in the hopes that that will make you smile and that we're moving in the right direction. Other pieces that, that I can share with you are, I think three big pieces that we're really focusing on are really trying to be as responsive as we absolutely can to our family and our staff stakeholder feedback from the survey administrations that we put forth, whether it be at the end of the distance learning scenario or in asking for their feedback about fall. And the three pieces that I'm referencing are, first, we're really trying to develop this comprehensive family toolkit, if you will, or for lack of a better word, which will be comprised of this website that has resources for pre-K through 12th, 12th grade families that will provide them with support for core technology tools and resources to support their students with learning at home. One of the things that we heard in, in, in so many different arenas were what are the things that we can do to help provide families with support? So they can be more successful with the learning needs of their students at home. And so this is a whole new concept that we want to provide. And we've talked about this in collaboration with our, our elementary and our secondary principals that we're hoping to push out within the course of the next few weeks. In addition to that toolkit would be what we're calling a teacher toolbox. And what we're doing there is we're trying to provide this whole new website, again, if you will, of pages, of information, of resources, of flipped instructional videos, of pop-up professional development, things that will actually, actually tangibly support teachers in the development of the instructional activities that they want to plan with students throughout the course of their first week of school or their, or their second week of school. And, and really what we're thinking about is how do we set families up to be as successful as possible? How do we set teachers up to be as successful as possible? And how do we set, how do we set students up to be as successfully as possible? And that's where I would highlight the third element that I would want to share with you. And that is this concept of a, a virtual student backpack that I think I referenced throughout the course of our last time together. And so we're working on this student backpack website-based concept that helps students really interact with technology tools and resources to support their learning in a hybrid learning environment and in a distance learning environment. And to really set them up to be successful with things as simplistic as how do I engage with some of these different resources that are, that teachers are asking me to engage with? To be as absolutely as successful as possible with respect to demonstrating my learning. So in addition to that, and I know I'm trying to be respectful of Superintendent McIntyre because I have so much to share and I know other people have so many exciting things to share as well. And I'm just excited about what I want to share with you because what we're trying to do is so powerful and what we're trying to do for kids is so impactful that I could talk for such a long time and I, I, I might not be as remotely engaging as I think I am. So I'll apologize for that in advance. But some of the other things we're thinking about is we're working with some of our curriculum vendors to think about what are some of the additional curriculum resources that we can purchase? To have in kids' hands and to have in kid, teachers' hands, excuse me, as they engage in various instructional activities. And, and this, this is pre-K through 12th grade. We're talking with music teachers, we're talking with art teachers, we're talking with elementary math teachers, we're talking with secondary English Language Arts teachers. What are the things that you need to be successful? In order to engage students in meaningful ways so that they can actively be successful in your learning experiences? We're also looking at, in a couple of weeks here, we have a couple of hundred. Laurel, you might know better than I. We have at least 100, 150, maybe even more new teachers that will be onboarding in our system that one of the primary responsibilities of the Department of Learning and Achievement is to onboard these new teachers successfully and provide them with the curriculum resources, the instructional background, the systemic procedures, the grounding in kind of our priority work that they need to be as absolutely as successful as possible. So that's something that's on the horizon that we're planning for. Another thing, other things that we're thinking about is we're trying to, one of the biggest pieces of feedback that we heard from families throughout the course of not just the fall stakeholder survey, but also the distance learning survey that occurred at the end of that experience was that families were wanting consistency in their experience. And so one of the biggest pieces that we're focusing on is how do we provide technology tools and learning management systems that allow families to feel familiar with a certain learning management experience for their, for their students? And so what I mean by that is, one of the decisions that we've made is to, at the elementary level, operate within a framework of pre-K through fifth grade of only utilizing CSOW as a learning management system. And from sixth through 12th grade, only utilizing Schoology as a learning management system. And again, not just to that point about families wanting consistency, but the other piece that families articulated in our survey was that they wanted consistency and experience with some of those learning activities. So we're working really feverishly to help develop some type of model templates or lesson design frameworks or exemplars, for lack of a better word, that we can kind of standardize so that at the elementary and the secondary level, when teachers engage in some of the development of those instructional activities, families and students feel like, okay, this is a very similar experience for me if I'm a seventh grade student and I'm going from ELA to math to music to what have you. So that consistency is something that has really been a focus for us as well. We're also looking at what types of systems that we can put in place. And I'm, I'm speaking really quickly and I, I, I'm sorry just because I know that Corey wants other people to talk and I respect Corey, so I'll be quiet. We're looking about, we're looking at other systems from intervention support. We're talking about how we can support our tag students, our gifted and talented students. We're looking at what types of intervention structures and systems we need to have in place for our Title I students and for our systems that are receiving Tier Two and Tier Three intervention support. And we're trying to develop hybrid and distance learning models for that, that type of support for families. We're engaging in conversations with teachers in so many different arenas. We're talking with our FIAE teachers around what, what is an elementary FIAE experience going to look like in a hybrid situation? We're talking with our music teachers about what is a high school guitar experience going to look like? And how do we make sure that we follow those safety precautions for students to ensure that we're being as responsible and safe and yet really engaging those kids in learning as possible? So these are all things that we're thinking about and talking about. And there's so many more things that I'd be excited to share with you. But I know that other people, you know, whether it's, you know, Kate or Laurel or Amy or Rev or Ron, I know that they have so many other more important things to share with you. I'll just stop talking and create a space for them to jump in and share all the things they're excited about as well. But I can't begin to tell you how excited I am about all the teachers that we have that are willing to participate in all these experiences for us. It's just, I'm, I'm eternally grateful for the support that I personally have had from Education Minnesota and Kelly Wilson as the Union President. And that relationship matters to me more than, more than you could possibly know. So I just wanted to really share that with you because it's very important to me and it's very important to the work of my department. And I just wanted to put that out there for you to understand. So I will mute myself and stop talking. I'm sorry.
Thank you. We're going to move on. We're going to move on to Student Services. And I did want to talk about, have Kate talk about special education because it is one of the more challenging areas to make a hybrid model work. So Kate, if you can briefly, concisely share the key pieces that we're working on here.
Thank you Superintendent McIntyre and hello board. And Heather, this is Kate speaking. And I get to follow Jeremy. Awesome. So in, in concisely and to the best of my ability, Student Services, as you know, is comprised of a lot of areas. So starting with early childhood, the leadership in early childhood has been contacting parents to determine what parents would like as far as for their child receiving services in the fall. Early childhood is not part of the Distance Learning Academy, so they are calling each and one of their, each of their families to ensure that their voices get heard and IEPs get amended and so on. So for special ed, we've been working, I got the numbers today or the names and the numbers today from Anthony. So I've been looking at numbers to see where the students are, where they're moving from, working on guidance for special ed teachers because they have to amend IEPs, they have to have conversations. I was really excited when Corey said we might get the gift of time there because I do believe our teachers are, all teachers and special ed teachers are going to need the time to contact parents. The IEPs need to be amended. That means, and that needs parent input. So I was pretty excited about that. So if that goes through, I will be dancing. For special ed as well, working with the various groups and Kim Reskrap on answering a lot of the questions that are coming up. Nursing is part of Student Services as well. And as you might imagine, there's a lot of questions regarding PPE and screening students as they come back in and what's the current guidance? uh screening students as they come back in and what's the current guidance? And, and yesterday what the current guidance was is not exactly what it is today. So trying to stay updated on all of the guidance so that we can be as prepared as possible for when our students do return, that we're giving accurate and timely information to the sites so they know how to welcome students into their schools. Um let me think, homeless, um Chrissy Zimba is back and she is contacting parents and parents and families are contacting her. At the end of last year, we had five hundred and twenty-nine students that were identified as homeless or highly mobile. She is starting off the year strong at thirty-three. That seems like a low number, but it is not. It in, it will grow, but for thirty-three, she's been at work for fifteen days. So it will grow um as parents uh and families reach out to her. She is providing resources to them. Uh the one resource that the families seem to need the most right now are food resources. So she has been able to work with SEEK to get them the food resources or providing other ways to get to other food shelves or sometimes providing those resources herself. The American Legion just donated, as you probably know, because you had to accept the um gift to the district that they gave the um the McKinney Vento, the homeless highly mobile program, five thousand dollars. So what, what a great partnership. I don't know who has that connection, but thank you, thank you, thank you. Mental health, uh Lee Carlson, Saint Davids and People Inc. have been providing telehealth services all summer to our students and they plan on continuing either telehealth or in-person working uh in, uh back in our sites. They are working with Dave Mordock to ensure that their safety plan mimics our safety plan and that they are well-prepared to um enter into our sites. Now is there anything I think that I've missed? Nope. I think that is a sixty thousand view of Student Services at this time.
All right, thank you Kate. So quickly, we're gonna move on to, I want Rev to talk about the efforts to plan the hybrid model around our um supporting our English learners uh to start the year. Thank you Rev.
Thank you Superintendent and Board members. Um I wanna thank uh Michael for his recognition of uh DLTO's work. Um and I'd be remiss for not calling out um Kirsten and her team for all the work that's really bringing this together around our EL work. Um I'm going to be quick uh and brief, but basically we've learned and uh continued to expose our areas of growth, opportunities for growth in our system, for supporting our EL learners, our multilingual communities. And in this um new opportunity, there's really been a focus on full collaboration on co-teaching and inclusive um instruction within the hybrid models and the distance learning model as well. We're looking at clustering and the strategic placement of students in a different way than we have that, that takes in their, their safety as well as their instructional opportunities so they get more focused opportunities with their direct uh well, both in co-teaching with both their EL instructors. That's different than we may have done in the past. Um we are working very aggressively to make sure that both language and content instructional models are integrated and aligned with the clear model that the district is using around culturally responsive and validating pedagogy. Um we've added a new, or we're in the process of fully implementing a new tool this year, Talking Points, which some of you are familiar with. And that's an exciting opportunity which will engage our uh families and community. It's a, that's a texting service, if you will, that takes English and translates it into a handful of languages, uh primary languages and allows community from which we've learned is one of the preferred methods of communication is texting, to receive messages in their own language. So that's a tremendous improvement in our communication efforts. In addition to that, we've um added, or not added, but are in the process of adding a new position that will work um pretty much extensively with our interpretation and translation services. It's um, it's just posted on the website now, we haven't even begun the interview, we're still going through that process. But fast-tracking to get somebody in that will really help us work in our communications with our multilingual and our EL community, that's very exciting. Um we've also added a third um um EL Stop Development Assessment Specialist this year. So we're increasing our supports within our buildings to support our teachers to implement these recommendations. Of course, they're all fully listed on uh the website, uh hashtag re- ready to restart, uh two seventy R, two seventy-nine, ready to restart. You can see the full detailed plans there. So that is as quick as I can be, uh sir, but giving a high level of what we've learned and what we're implementing um from the great assessments that Jerry's team has helped us be able to better understand the, the work that we're here to do.
Hey, thank you Rev for, for that update and that is another challenging area. And um yes, you can hear Board members, some restructuring of how to uh look at schedules and um supporting the learning in this um, this new model. So I'm gonna move us on to some of our operations areas. And Ron, I think is gonna really cover six different areas, maybe with the help of Jeremy and Carrie Cave. As I don't think Brian's back yet, so Ron, I'll turn it over to you, I think, starting with health and safety.
All right, good evening, Cheryl Saffi, Superintendent McIntyre and School Board members. There continues to be a tremendous amount of work and progress related to the implementation of our operations plan that has occurred over the last week since the decision was made to start the year in the full hybrid model. So I'll touch briefly on each of those six areas that Superintendent McIntyre just uh referenced uh that's in our plan and give you just a quick summary of the work that's happening and also some of the challenges that are, we are currently working through. So I'll start uh in the health and safety area. Again, as we talked about previously, I'm starting here because uh health and safety plan really impacts all of those other areas of operations. So we have uh put in the orders um and delivery dates have been established to ensure that our face masks and our face shields, our hand sanitizer, cleaning products, our sanitizing, uh sanitizing products are all delivered to the district and then distributed out to each of our sites before school begins. Also, we have Plexiglas that's scheduled to be installed at the first point of contact in each of the buildings as well as in those food service spaces. We have signage that's gonna be sent to each of the sites um and those building leaders will place them throughout the building as reminders on social distancing, on hand washing, uh the symptoms of COVID nineteen, et cetera. We've started to identify members of that district-wide COVID nineteen response team uh that we've previously talked about. And we're also developing the process and protocols that that team will utilize when there's a confirmed or sus- uh suspected uh exposure case of COVID in one of our buildings. And finally, we have rolled out that COVID site safety plan that Steve had talked about earlier, uh the templates to all of our uh site leadership teams and, and several of our departments as well. So this week and next, those leadership teams will be working in coordination with our operations departments and several other departments as well, including our uh DLTO team uh to finalize those safety plans that are specific to their building. Um some of the elements to that plan including uh include identifying a COVID building coordinator, creating an isolation room for students with COVID symptoms, determining areas on where to eat meals uh with social distancing in play, coordinating traffic flow in hallways for students and staff, and clearly articulating expectations for students and staff related to masks, social distancing, hand washing, and uh in partnership with the custodial team, also regularly disinfecting high-touch areas throughout the schools. So uh as Steve had mentioned earlier, earlier, the site safety plans are due on uh August twenty-first. And then uh for a couple of weeks after, our health and safety team will go out to each one of the buildings um before we welcome back any students, just to review the building and ensure that the plan has been implemented in full in each of those spaces. Next, I wanna uh pivot to our facilities and custodial work. Our team is Billy uh is busy preparing our buildings for the return of school. Not just in finishing up our typical summer work, which as you know from uh previous summers can be pretty intense those last few weeks of summer, but we're also implementing our facility alterations for the hybrid model. Uh some of the things that this includes is uh disabling our water fountains and installing some additional uh bottle fillers. We're also helping school staff to move around desks and tables in the classrooms and other areas in the buildings uh to create space for uh students to eat meals. We're training all of our custodial staff on the cleaning and sanitizing protocols and new products uh that we've acquired. We're readjusting our HVAC systems to increase airflow and to extend the start and end times of those units. And we're installing the Plexiglas components that I touched on earlier in the health and safety summary. Some of the timing challenges that we're facing uh for facilities and custodial is that much of the furniture movement and the desk and table placement is really gonna be based on the scheduling of our staff and students as well as um our students A and B assignments. Uh and I know Anthony and Kelly touched on that earlier and some of the challenges that we have as it relates to our um, our Distance Learning Academy. So uh, so these movements is really contingent on the results of those family requests and the opt-in to the Distance Learning Academy. We're also uh in the process of hiring a few more custodians to fill out our team. Um and I, it's important to note, I wanna be clear uh that we've been challenged really for several years at recruiting and hiring custodians because of the tight job market. This has been several of our air, operations areas, including custodians, our nutrition service, certainly our bus drivers that we'll talk about in a moment. And this year is certainly not an exception. So uh right now, we're looking for about six staff to join us. Um and another thing to keep in mind is that we have a hundred and eighty staff total in our custodial buildings and grounds team. So um the six openings that we have is really a very small percentage of the overall department. We also have built this operations plan based on our current reality. So we, while we do uh are looking to hire a few more people, we are anticipating that we'll be able to fully implement this operational plan uh with the team that we do have and the staffing levels that we have. So now I'll, I'll shift to nutrition services. As you recall, we're creating a plan to offer meals to students in the building as well as uh curbside for those students in our hybrid model. We're also planning to offer delivered meals to those families uh that opted into our Distance Learning Academy and cannot present themselves to one of those curbside sites or breakfast or lunches. So these meals will be delivered um a week at a time uh through our transportation team and they'll align with those meals that we're serving in the site. So we'll uh send them out a week at a time uh through transportation. Our team's also working at implementing a touchless checkout process for our students at that cashier station instead of using the typical tin pad that we've used in the past. So this could include using barcodes on student IDs, um which is something that's newly available to us with the software that we're implementing this summer. As we look at transportation, um as we previously discussed, we continue to experience a driver shortage uh in our area and really in the state. Fortunately, because some of the other metro school districts have opted to start the year in a distance learning model, we will have enough drivers this year for our routes to start the school year. Um our staff has been working very closely with our contractors to ensure that there's appropriate cleaning and sanitizing protocols in place for each of our buses and also that all of the drivers are properly trained on those protocols. One of the challenges uh in transportation specifically is on the routing side of the operation. Um in a typical year, we would actually be finishing up our routing right now for both our regular education and our special education transportation. Uh but this year, because of that A B designation assignment, um as well as all of those students opting into the Distance Learning Academy, we're significantly delayed in the finalizing of the routing. Anthony talked a little bit about it uh before. Um at first glance, in the raw data, uh there may be upwards of thirty-five hundred students of those five thousand that Anthony mentioned that are eligible for transportation that opted for that Distance Learning Academy. So all of those students need to be pulled off those routes before we can finalize the routes. Also, we need to continue to balance that A B assignments as any uh changes occur um to make sure that those buses aren't filled to more than the fifty percent capacity per the governor's um executive order. Um uh something to keep in mind is to ensure that all of our families get their transportation information before the first day of school. Um as it, as it stands now at September eighth, we would actually need to send, finalize our routes and get prepared to send out postcards no later than August twenty-fifth, which is only a short week and a half away. So this is a big hurdle for our team and, and they're working very long hours to try to overcome that. So now I'm gonna turn it over to Carrie Cave, who's gonna walk us through a brief summary of the childcare component to the operations plan and update. Carrie?
Good evening, thanks Ron. Um as for childcare, we too are um definitely waiting for other dominoes to fall into place as many um staff have indicated. Uh we have built behind the scenes our L E O registration. That's our registration software that we use to register families for childcare and that is ready to go, but we are um anxiously awaiting that A B placement as we need families to know what day they are um needing full daycare versus before and after care, for instance. So a lot of that is already ready to go. Um our hope is, right now, um no later than forty-eight hours after A B announcements are made, we'd have that registration live and potentially sooner. Um we have um worked very hard, um we have some pretty dedicated staff that put some long hours and they're figuring out the puzzle. Um you have to think through families potentially have multiple schedules they could be enrolling in. They could need before care, after care, full day care, um and then that Friday care for um the Distance Learning Day as well. So working very hard to piece those um situations together. Um we also did a survey out to families, as you may have seen, and we got over twelve hundred responses, which is amazing. So that's a great thanks to our community, just to give us a somewhat general idea of what our community members are going to need for care. Um so we just sent um an email out this afternoon to building administrators um around, so this is what the survey data told us that might potentially enroll. So as you start to look at spaces, um these are the kind of um volumes we may expect um for childcare needs at each site. Um we may also have to consider some hub sites if we have lower enrolled um sites just based off of um trying to staff that and making sure um that we're utilizing space appropriately as well. So um those are just some quick highlights where we are, but we're really waiting on that placement before we would place families cuz it'd be a logistical nightmare to try to um have them enroll for multiple schedules and then have our scheduler try to approve contracts and we don't necessarily know what days they need care.
And finally, Anthony's gonna walk us through the um operational piece on technology.
Uh everything is uh moving along very well on the technology side. All of the uh additional technology equipment has been placed for order. Um the iPads to complete our one-to-one, uh we anticipate to have um by next Friday or the twenty-eighth, the Friday um after that at the latest, based on uh what we were told when we ordered. Um all of the, the twenty-one thousand devices that are in our possession are all prepped and ready to go. The Chromebook order that came in um based on our, our, our DL4A plan for fourth and fifth grade, they are all prepped and ready to go and sorted by sites. Um so we are well underway and um getting ready for deployment of devices. The deployment of all student devices will occur September first and second at each of the uh school sites. So just like we did for collection at the end of the year, we're gonna do a mass deployment at all sites between those two days. So we're doing a lot of partnership uh with, with building leaders and making sure we have the enough uh, the appropriate staff to help support that as families come in and get ready for the school year as well. Um the cases that we ordered for these devices, those have already arrived. Um so we're just waiting for that small shipment of iPads and then um we'll be fully good to go and ready to deploy those devices. Uh the team is prepping and organizing around the technology support and what that's gonna look like um for, you know, both. As, as we organized our team, we kinda organized it in a way that would be fluid between, you know, in-person, hybrid and a distance learning model. So the team is really organizing around that and getting prepped for when students are back in and our service models that we're gonna continue to provide um as well as taking in account that Distance Learning Academy and how we continue to provide virtual um support to families and students through our, our Help Desk system and, and having our team organized around that. So we're feeling in a, a very good position around tech support to continue to um engage and make that happen.
All right, thank you Anthony, uh and Ron and the whole team, Carrie, everyone. I appreciate your um overview of just a lot of moving parts that we put together in a very short period of time. Um and really, I think the theme there is we are hitting our targets so far with a lot of work left to do. And I'm gonna shift over to uh speaking of that, human resources have, have to had to restaff and is in the middle of restaffing uh process that we usually have done in, in April or, or, or March. And now we're doing it in the middle of August.
And now we're doing it in the middle of August. So Laurel, please share your update on where we're at with our staffing efforts.
Sure. In terms of staffing, I want to highlight four areas. One is related to the accommodation requests that we have. We put out a form. It was due on Thursday. As of this morning, and it does change daily, we had 180 requests from staff for accommodations. Of that 180 requests, 129 were teachers, 32 were ESPs or AESPs, and the remainder were other support staff. In addition to that, we had 92 requests for non-ADA-related reasons. So of the 92, 57 were teachers and 25 were ESPs or AESPs. In addition, we surveyed our subs, and we had sent out surveys to over 600 employees. We received 312 back, and we asked the question, are you willing to work substitute in each model? 57% said they were willing to substitute in person, 67% in a hybrid, and 64 in a distance environment. As I highlighted last week, we sent out a request for our current employees to get their short call sub license. We sent that request out on August 5th, and we have already received 38 staff members that are wanting to get and will get their short call sub license to serve as subs if we need them. And then, as both Kelly, Steve, and Anthony all mentioned, we've been meeting as a team with I2T2 and DLTL to talk about staffing. And I want to talk through some of the steps of staffing and how we're going to look at staffing those employees into the DLA model. As you heard, first, students are registered for DLA, and we'll look at what classes they'll take. The second step is that we'll look at the list of teachers who have requested an accommodation, look at their licensure, and place as many of those employees as we can. The third is we'll look at the list of employees who requested a non-ADA accommodation to work remotely and place those as many staff as we can. And finally, if there is a need for additional staff, we'll look for volunteers. We need specific licensers. We're also going to inquire about people getting an out-of-field permission if they so desire to continue to work remotely. So those are some of our options. Once we have staffed DLA, then our sites will learn what the staff are that are left. We may have to shift between buildings across the district as well. And so all of that will be occurring over the next five weeks. And like Cory mentioned, we normally do this over a course of three or four months, and we're going to condense this into a very short timeline. And as I think about our timeline, next Monday, the 24th, is new teacher workshop. And we'll just be starting to staff DLA at that time. So we are going to have teachers ready to come back, and we won't have class lists for them, but they're going to be engaging in curriculum development and equity work. And so we will have them engaged in our work. It's just that they won't have specific information related to their courses. So it's a tremendous amount of work that we're going to get done in a short period of time, and then we have to give it over to the buildings to continue with their tremendous amount of work.
All right. Thank you, Laurel. I'm going to turn it over to Barb to update our efforts on communications. And I know there's been a large volume of communications work, just like you've been hearing in every other department. So thank you, Barb, for your update.
Thank you, Cory. Work in the last two weeks has focused on two things: pushing information out to all in broadways and responding to questions from individual parents and caregivers. Tonight, board members, I'll highlight main areas of work and also share some communication challenges. The first area is the website. We've posted a great deal of information to the 279 Ready to Start section of the website, and we continue to add content almost every day. There have been nearly 70,000 hits to the main page of that section to date. And I can tell you that many are viewing the plan details document because every time I'm in there, which is a lot, I see 25 to 50 others in at the same time. The FAQs are also an important resource, addressing dozens of the most common questions and linking to additional resources. Also today, we posted flow charts that walk through actions that will be taken if a student or staff member exhibits COVID-like symptoms or has close contact with a COVID-positive individual. In terms of We Listen, which is the response to individual questions, our We Listen email account is just one of many across our system, receiving lots of questions from parents and caregivers. In the past two weeks, I've responded to more than 500 individual We Listen messages, and as of the start of this meeting, I still had 25 in my inbox. It's been a significant challenge to respond to that many individual messages, many of which have multiple questions within them. In normal times, I typically respond to We Listen messages within 24 hours, but my responses in the past two weeks have ranged from almost immediate to more than a week later, which I will be the first to say is not what we would ever want in terms of response time. We also are using social media, of course. We're posting to the district's social media accounts and responding as we can to questions posed there. But there's a challenge as well because catching up on those is extremely challenging. In terms of translations, with the help of Rev's team of bilingual assistance, we've translated the Ready to Restart brochure and the main content of the website. And those translations are available on the website in three languages other than English. The brochure has been sent in those languages by email and posted to the respective Facebook communities. Timely translations remain an ongoing and challenging task. We are not providing timely communication to our multilingual families, and at the same time, I can assure you that we are pushing it out as fast as we can turn it around. I do want to give you an example of how our EL and bilingual and equity staff colleagues are taking extra care to reach multilingual families. Prior to the distance learning academy deadline, bilingual staff members personally reached out to the families of about 200 students who are receiving summer EL services and who either don't have an email in our information system and/or regularly require interpreting services. They attempted to reach another 100 student families but were not able to connect. Another colleague distributed 200 Ready to Restart brochures to various Liberian community organizations and African-owned businesses. And I expect that the next few weeks will feel very similar to what I just described. We will continue to push out information to all and respond to individual questions to the best of our ability.
All right. Thank you, Barbara. If that was your opinion, then you probably have 30 in your inbox now.
Yes, that is exactly what's happening tonight.
Yeah. And I want to say thank you to the communications team for all the extra efforts that's been happening with all the complexity. Naturally, there's more questions. It's just part of the process of doing something different. So I'm grateful for the hard work that's happening with Barb and her team. Two items left to go before we get to some board member questions. I wanted Amy to give an update of what we know today on activities and athletics. This is another evolving area. So thanks, Amy, for being patient and for your update.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. I am happy to share what we know today, but we know this is a very fluid situation. We certainly were happy and know that people had very mixed feelings about the update from the Minnesota State High School League, but at least we have known information that we can work forward with. And so the activities directors are working very, very diligently to make sure that all of the, to just make sure that all of the coaches are being communicated with and trying to put COVID safety plans into place. And so really getting into the details of what needs to happen in order to be ready for August 17th, which is right around the corner. Additionally, we are working very closely with the State High School League, again, taking into consideration COVID safety plans and talking about performing arts. So we heard Jeremy and Kelly speak a little bit about, you know, during the school day, how are we thinking about band? How are we thinking about choir? Kelly talked about an incredibly lengthy conversation that we had, literally hours, about safety requirements when we're thinking about performing arts. So it's incredibly nuanced. We don't have any decisions yet at this time, but know we are being very intentional with what that's going to look like. And so the conversations continue as it is very fluid. But that is kind of the next pieces of work that we are working closely with in collaboration with a lot of people to make sure that we have made a good decision, knowing that this really matters for our students when our students are coming back to learning that looks really, really different, that this is sometimes a way that students have an outlet or their avenue that they're really passionate about, something that they really connect with each other in different ways outside the school day. So we know how much this matters to students and to families. So we are being very thoughtful and intentional about how we move forward. So that is my very quick update for where we're at right now.
Thank you, Amy. And lastly, I'll have Ron just give an update on also the evolving budget implications and actions that we're going to be able to take to support the plan moving forward. So thanks, Ron.
Yep. Just a couple of quick points that I wanted to make. Board members will remember that as we started to create our fall plan, we encouraged each of our work groups, our four work groups, to definitely be creative in their planning, but also to try to stay budget neutral if possible. At the same time, we certainly knew that we would have some costs, whether it's associated with CPE or cleaning supplies, any alterations to our buildings, and perhaps even some staffing costs that weren't factored into that adopted budget that we adopted back in June. As we have previously discussed, our district is eligible for, and we've known this for some time now, a couple of months, we're eligible for about $3.8 million in CARES funding through both year as well as ESSER programs. Part of that, a portion of that, actually needs to be allocated to non-publics in our district. So we're anticipating right around $3 million or so that Osseo Area Schools can utilize for our fall planning. We're in the process right now of applying for those funds, and those funds need to be used no later than the middle of 2022. So we do have some time to be able to utilize that. And there is some criteria for some of the funds. We can use them for some summer schools, some technology, and then there's some other funds that are less restrictive. Our plans were to use those funds to offset any of those additional expenses to implement our COVID plan across the district. So some new information that we just actually found out yesterday, or got some more details yesterday, that as part of the governor's executive order for Minnesota Safe Learning Plan that he unveiled a couple of weeks ago, $244 million are proposed to be distributed to schools from what's called the Coronavirus Relief Fund. This was, these are funds that were also established in the CARES Act, and Governor Walz, as part of his executive orders, dedicated these funds to go to schools. So yesterday morning, Osseo, the MDE published the amount, and Osseo's portion at this point is anticipated to be just over $6 million. And there's a couple of components for these funds that they can be used for. They can be used for operational costs, but they can also be used for costs associated with supporting student, family, and educator needs. Now, there is a caveat to these particular funds, and that's that we have to use them for expenditures between July 1st of 2020 and December 30th of 2020. So a very tight timeline on these particular funds. They're really meant towards helping schools get up and running in these three different models for our back-to-school. So again, we just learned of these funds yesterday. Our team has been really trying to dig in from a variety of sources, including Valerie Dosland, with Ewald Consulting, with Department of Health, Department of Education, with Masbo, which is our business officials organization, statewide organization. And so we're really digging in. We're hoping to get some more clarity from the Department of Ed here even in the coming days in terms of how and when we will actually receive those funds. And then hopefully some more details in terms of some of the criteria for how we can use those funds to make sure that we can take advantage of those even with the short timeframe. So that's my update. It's certainly great news for our district to offset some of those expenditures that we certainly do have with our startup, and we'll know more here in the coming days and weeks.
All right. So right before we get to some questions, and maybe Chair O'Staphy, I'll turn it back to you for facilitating the question process, but I did want to just end with a couple of comments here tonight. So now that you've heard the update, I want to acknowledge the amazing work of our staff and everything that's happening and the challenges, as you can hear, being presented. But the fact that our staff is working at a very high level as we're getting closer and closer to the start, and it's consuming everyone. It's consuming everything they're doing, and yet we are surrounded by amazingly talented staff to leverage our best as soon as we can. As you've heard, new information every day. Our presentation shows the layers and complexity across the departments and the complications that we're working through to ensure a very safe and high-quality plan. And again, I'll come back to that, that we believe it is a high-quality plan, and you've heard throughout the departments, the challenge of time. As much as we also want time for families to plan, we also are up against time for making sure we have staff safely prepared, trained, time for planning with schedules and master schedules and class lists and staffing and staff assignments, transportation, programming-specific areas, including our specials, and then really just ensuring that we have a high-quality implementation and strong quality control. And a big, big step towards that is by the end of next week, having the building-level safety plans and all those details in place as staff come back and we work with our teachers and our ESPs as they come back to implement all the details of the site-level needs that each school has unique to their own buildings. So as we wrap up here, as I said earlier, as you know, even as we're moving forward with all these details, we're still evaluating what our situation is, and it continues to evolve. We'll learn more tomorrow. We'll learn more into the, into next week. And I am still, as you've heard me say, open and needing to be open to and recommending a change, of course, if we need to, if the data is there to support it. And the 25th is when I intend to come back with my recommendation to continue with that hybrid model, as you supported last week, or make a new recommendation likely in the distance learning trend. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chair O'Staphy for kind of the process we've utilized here remotely that's worked really well for additional follow-up questions before we get to the remainder of our agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent McIntyre, and thank you for, thank you to the entire cabinet for the presentation. We obviously have, you know what, an hour and a half of that and a lot of notes. So let's try to, I'll go through a list of our board members, and let's try to start with two questions each, and then we can wrap around again as we go forward. So let's start with Director Simons.
Yes. Wow. That's a lot of information to digest tonight. And again, I really appreciate the work and effort that's being put into this. I understand the position that everybody is in in responding to the great detail that was released from the governor and from the Department of Education, and especially all the health and safety protocols that we had to work through at a late point in time to adjust to. And I really appreciated that Ron pointed out that that really is the foundation for a lot of our other decision-making, the health and safety parameters, how that does affect everything. And I appreciate everybody providing a really good balance of the progress that's being made as well as the risks that we're seeing to date. And so I'd reiterate my comments from last week when we discussed this, which is, I really think that we need to stay consistent with the governor's direction in terms of providing the hybrid opportunity. But I also understand that we must be able to do this and execute it very well. So I'm open and flexible to supporting the leadership, the feedback, the teams, the many teams that involve administration and representation from teachers as well, providing the best recommendation possible for a successful start to the school year. So we must remain flexible in what that looks like, and I appreciate that really good balance of information, as I said. As far as questions, you know, as much as we can continue to provide a communication timeline to families and stakeholders, that will continue to be helpful. I appreciated kind of hearing some of that tonight in terms of the deadlines for next week. I think that's really valuable for us to understand the need for childcare and understanding the need of, needs for parents who do need to be working in person or working from home and are really struggling to be able to support their kids in the hybrid or distance learning environment ways heavily on my mind. I appreciate the thinking that's going into that as well. So I appreciate the thinking that's going into that as well. And you know, I'd continue to encourage everybody to operate with um transparency and a solution-oriented mindset. So what I mean by that is um if we're feeling concerned or we're seeing things that don't sit right with us, please, we need to hear that, we need to be open to that feedback. And based on what I heard tonight, it seems that we really are open to that. But we also need to be solution-oriented, um and I'm hearing that as well from from all of you. So we need to acknowledge the risks, the concerns, the things that we're not seeing um that might be on track or quite coming together as we had hoped, um but we need to be solution-oriented in that. So that applies to everybody in our district and all staff members when I think about that. Please be solution-oriented in identifying concerns. That's all I'll say at this time. So uh I don't have any further questions, but just continue to support the work that you're doing, and we, and please uh continue to bring to light what uh new information we have, concerns you have, successes, so we can have a balanced approach and make the best decision in these last few weeks before we begin school.
Thank you, Director Simons. Uh, next up, Director Dawson Walton.
It has been a a long uh week and a half, I think, for everybody. As you know, our district leadership made the recommendation to remove hybrid, um obviously with distance learning as an option. And so I know a lot of work has been done, a lot of um considerations, and I do appreciate, um, I mean, I think that the greatest way to build trust is to hear from our community and be responsive to them. And um I just heard a lot of fear and uncertainty, which we're all experiencing, I'm experiencing that. Um, and so I appreciate the the inclusivity that um I believe our district leadership has has exuded during the last, like, just week and a half to ramp that up um with our teachers and ESPs and our parents. Um, I think it's really hard when things are rapidly changing to um to be the, to be nimble enough to do that and and to recognize that there are some gaps and that and that we're going to do our due diligence to to hear um voices. I I'm, you know, there's a lot of information, but I really want to go back to Superintendent McIntyre kind of in the beginning um around the numbers. And though we're following the governor's order, there's still room for interpretation in that, it's not that simple. And what's concerning to me is the disproportionality of the the COVID, um what's happening with the coronavirus in our community. Um, we've always had, um, though it's very diverse in our our community, it's also there's stark disparities. And um I said it last week, and I'll say it again, um, the decision to reconsider, as we've been talking about tonight, potentially, I just would ask that we look at the numbers very conservatively with the racial equity lens. Because there is disparities in those numbers, because it's not as simple as the twenty-three point seven. It's just, it's not, and I think we know that. So I appreciate you doing your due diligence to um look in, look into that more. Um, our, in, I think there's, the data is one piece, but it's the gut of the instinct also of our community and on our teachers and our educators and our families that we also need to listen to. And so I just think those two, you know, really coming together. I mean, it sounded like from Barb, you know, just all the things that you're taught, you know, you, you know, reaching out and and that, um, I think that's great. I mean, I'm 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 so happy that that that's happening and happened and continued to happen. And so um, so that's one piece, I would say. I I'm just, I I just, that's what's unsettling to me more than anything around this and why um it just doesn't leave my mind at all. Um, so, and I think that it's hard to be solutions-based when, you know, you have all this stuff coming at you and um you you're not really in control of some of the numbers, and you don't know what to do. Sometimes, you know, as parents and community, you just, all you can do is express how you're how you're feeling at that moment, and and that's okay, and I I just welcome that. I just, I I do want to say, I know that a lot of our teachers and ESPs had a, an event tonight um at um at the ESC, and I just, I'm just thankful that our district allows voices of our of our teachers and our staff to um to voice their concerns. Um, and I I I just, I'm 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 thankful we're in a district that that will allow that. Um, I have a, I do have a lot of questions, of course, because there's more information. Um, but one of the things I wanted to ask was about um to Anthony, I'm gonna try to make this a twofer. But with the with the enrollment, the way it is, so maybe like a little less than a quarter of our of our students enrolling in DLA, are they across the district? Is it, is it one particular school? I mean, I know you gave us the breakdown of high school, middle, and elementary, but how does that kind of break down across the district?
Yeah, so we have um well over, you know, in our large sites, you know, hundreds of enrollments, so it it at each site. So it's not necessarily um highly concentrated in one building or or, you know, just a particular group of buildings. We are seeing registrations and enrollments from every single site. And when we look at special ed numbers and EL numbers, we're seeing that distribution as well from all of our sites as well. In terms of looking at proportionality between um, you know, our communities, we we haven't gotten to that level of breakdown yet with the schools, um but it is something that that we we are planning and, you know, intend to to look into um as we continue to move forward. So that's, that's what I can share right now with what I know of the breakdown of the numbers.
So at some point, we'll know, like, let's say, the three high school or the four high schools that will know, you know, Maple Grove, this percent, you know, this many um for Park Center, the Internet Learning, and then Park Center, okay, so we'll have that.
It it's really hard when you look at the raw numbers, because all our school sizes vary. So when you see a large number, it could be representative of a large school for having a large number, or we have a small school. So we have to look at some of the proportions in there based on what their actual um enrollment is. Um, but you know, you know, for instance, if we talk about a large elementary like Basswood, there's a hundred and sixty-three students registered from Basswood. Um, so you know, it's again, varied across our district. Um, you know, quickly off of our high schools, I can give that breakdown. Um, Park Center Senior High, we have six hundred and forty-one. Uh, Maple Grove Senior High, five hundred and sixty, and uh Maple Grove Senior High, two hundred and ninety-one. Uh, so that gives you the big high school picture. Um, and then elementary, we'd have to break down kind of further.
Wait, did you, you, what were you saying? Osseo was five sixty and Maple Grove was two ninety, or?
Yeah, Osseo Senior High is five hundred and sixty and two ninety-one at Maple Grove Senior High.
Okay. Okay, I'm missing a sneaking a question, because technically, my first thing is a comment. Um, in terms of the money, the two hundred and fourteen-four million that we just, that big kind of Corona relief and that we're getting six million, so this is kind of to Anthony and Ron. So knowing that internet access continues to be a gap, is that what, is that funding, can that be used to start to close that gap for our students and families or teachers or ESPs that are experiencing um a lack of access to strong internet connections?
Yep, so i- in our proposal and working on purchasing, we have internet hotspots as part of some of the CARES dollars that we're gonna make sure that the existing three hundred and fifty hotspots that we purchased this spring will continue to have coverage through the entire school year, and we're gonna purchase additional hotspots with that. You know, what I will share is beyond what we can budget for with with CARES funding, I have also been having conversations with the city of Brooklyn Park and their CARES funding, Hennepin County, Brooklyn Bridge Alliance, and some other nonprofits that have come forward with grant opportunities around creating programs for connecting our students. Um, you know, we, we're we're budgeting and planning for kind of what we we identified as our need last year. We identified students and families who needed connectivity issues, so we have that group of students. There's a piece of an unknown where, you know, we had families that, you know, signed up for free internet essentials through Comcast or were, you know, given bill forgiveness during the time that those programs don't necessarily exist. So there's a little bit of unknown that we're trying to be mindful of and plan for, and also look at our community partners on how we can engage collectively um within this, because there's definitely a desire that internet connectivity, good quality internet connectivity, is more than just our students. It serves our families, it serves our community members. So uh again, trying to find those longer-term solutions with our partners that are out there in conjunction with what we do have budgeted and allocated for to help support that this year.
And I I would just add to that, um, Chelsea, that the part of the new funding, the CRF uh funds, the Corona uh Coronavirus Relief Fund specifically calls out technology devices and internet. So it might be something, again, because we have to get creative in how we use the different pots of money because of the timelines that we have to spend it. So it's very possible why we initially had kind of geared some of those pieces that Anthony talked about in our CARES dollars, that we may shift it to this new funding source because it's, because we have to spend that before December thirty-first. So the answer to your question is yes, and we have to look at the whole big picture on all the needs and figure out where do they fit best in terms of the funding source, the criteria that we need for each of those funding sources, and the timeline for those.
Thank you for that, and I I just would just encourage you and totally, I very much support you pursuing those partnerships, whether it's with the county, the city organizations, because I think that hotspots provide some relief, but we know that, I mean, what, I mean, there's, they can, they're, I mean, they're not that hard-wire connection, and I um, and especially when multiple people are on a, family members are maybe on, using it, you know, it's just not um always super reliable. So I just would just, yeah, I would, I very much support you, and I just think that um if we could look at even creative solutions with some of our other potential partners, that'd be um really great for our families.
Yeah, that is the conversation with our partner and our our city and our county partners, because um I think we all recognize that hotspots are kind of a short-term solution to get us through this, where there's larger community um pieces for long-term solutions that we need to strategize around that do take a little more time to actually put in place.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, next up, Director Douglas, do you have any questions or comments?
Okay, can you hear me off?
Yes.
Wow, that was really a lot of information, all in a relatively short period of time, actually. Um, I, I do have a lot of questions, but I feel like more than that, I just kind of want to say two things. I understand um that everyone involved in this decision-making process and developing the plans for moving forward and how are we going to open schools, everyone is working overtime, really hard, and um putting in a lot of effort, and I really appreciate all of that. One concern that I have when I hear all the things that we're saying, that are are being said, is I feel like a significant portion of the information that has been shared tonight is questions, not by board members, but from staff saying, you know, how are we going to do this? How are we going to do that? We're thinking about how we're going to do these things. And I feel that our community, um specifically our teachers and parents, are really frustrated without that concrete piece of information um in all of these little areas. I think Kelly Parpart put it really, really well, I feel like, um, saying that there's, I, you know, I wrote it down, I can't find it, but basically that um we have a lot of logistics to figure out. And um I think everybody has said in one way or another that each of these things is dependent upon another, and it's like, like Kelly said, a a huge puzzle with a lot of pieces, and we can't leave any piece out. And so for our families and uh community members who are listening, teachers who are listening, um, I just want to say that as a board member, we, I hear what you're saying and the concerns that you have about all of these little pieces, and I know that that there's a lot happening behind the scenes. There's a lot more information that couldn't be shared during this meeting, because it's just too much, and there's so many moving parts that are constantly, just constantly evolving and changing. Uh, with that said, some of the questions that I have, um, I'll just ask two, because Mike, you said two, right?
Yep.
Are, um, specifically when it comes to our ventilation system, I got disconnected very briefly, and so Ron, I wasn't sure if you had said anything about whether or not we'll be using HEPA filtration in our HVAC system. Could you address that?
Um, I I will do my best without getting into a lot of the technical details. Um, I will say that um Dale Carlstrom and Jeff Arthurs, who lead our our facilities team, have been working very closely with um our HVAC manufacturers, um our engineers, um to ensure that we have the uh the best HVAC scenario and indoor air quality, based on the guidance that we've received from um Department of Health and others in terms of of airflow and things like that. We don't um, we don't have uh HEPA filters, we have what's called MERV filters in our units. Um, those are specifically di- designed for our HVAC units. And so uh similar in terms of the filtration with that. Um, and so again, the the key components that we are uh working on in terms of our HVAC is the runtime, um and and whether it's doing it a few hours, uh either side of having anyone in the buildings, or we can even go all the way to twenty-four-seven and be recirculating and bringing in that fresh air um twenty-four hours a day. Um, and and then that exchange rate, uh in terms of when that new um air is coming in, and um all the way in terms of from from our perspective, uh every eight minutes, we're bringing in a fresh air into those spaces. Um, so again, there's a lot of technical pieces. The other thing that I'll say, um Heather, in terms of our HVAC units, is we've spent over the last five years, um forty-five, upwards of forty-five million dollars through our LTFM work on our HVAC units. And so we've put um an extensive investment into making sure that we have uh HVAC units that can be relied upon, that are newer, um that are the very best in terms of air circulation and air filtration into our buildings, and we have um, you know, ways to continue to monitor those um to ensure that they're working and they're providing the the circulation and the filtration that we uh need in those buildings.
Thank you. Um, so my my next question is actually from Barb Olton. Um, I know that you have been just really um, you know, pedal to the metal with response to communication and um working diligently to be as responsive as possible and giving information out to people as timely as possible. Um, I was wondering about um, one of the issues that we had pre-COVID, actually, was some inconsistencies with our um our district website versus um individual webpages for specific sites. And I was wondering um if there is a plan to have COVID-specific information and information related to um CLA and um possible changes as we may or may not move in and out of learning models, be consistent across all of those different platforms.
So Heather, I'd I'd like to, I probably want to connect with you after to find out more about the inconsistencies that you're mentioning. During the spring and even now, we've had all the school websites just point to the district website, because there's really one clearinghouse of information, and that is true now as well, so.
So all of the sites that like, you know, like blog-type sites that school kind of their own have been shut down?
I didn't say that, I'm not sure what.
Okay.
So school websites that we manage, uh, we don't teach our blogs per se, but if it says school website, like Palm Creek Elementary, their website points to the district site. Now, there may be teacher websites or blogs or non-district sponsored social media that we do not manage, but for those that we manage, we're pointing to the district website as the central clearinghouse of information.
Okay. So this information, including the um the backpack toolkit that Jeremy was talking about, will be very easily accessible.
I would imagine Jeremy and I can collaborate on that.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, uh, thank you, Director Douglas. Next up, Director Miskati Jones, do you have any questions?
Yeah, she, her internet went all over.
Such a funny question to ask.
Such a funny question to ask. So, wow, I love the level of detail in the updates, I appreciate it very much, I think it helps our teachers and families who feel like, it's, it's just a scary time for everyone, and I understand that there's a lot of questions and concerns and fears, and I truly appreciate being open and transparent about the process. So that being said, my first questions are about ESPs. So Anthony, will ESPs be getting devices to be able to support teachers when we're doing hybrid and distance learning?
Yep, and Becky Hespin and I actually met on this this week as well, and so for the last two years, any ESP that supports instruction, so our instructional ESPs, our title ESPs, our EL, our special ed, and our technology ESPs have all been issued through our instructional technology program, either an iPad or Chromebook to support instruction. That actually makes up, and we looked at the list, about 70% of, of the ESPs within our organization. So when we look at remaining ESPs, clerical ESPs, hall monitors, bus ESPs, again, depending on what they need to do for their role, if they need a piece of mobile technology, if we go into distance learning like we did last spring, any of those positions that needed a mobile technology, we worked with them to either check a device out through, you know, the, their school, through student laptop carts that were no longer being used, or, or other pieces of hardware that we had located around the school district. So we, we will work to continue to support our ESPs in that, and again, for the last two years, our, our program has always provided instructional ESPs who are supporting student instruction in the classroom with a mobile device, because that's a part of our digital learning plan. In order for them to help support with digital learning, they need to have access to the tools as well.
So Anthony, you're, I'm just going to stick with you for a little bit here, just because I love hearing your voice, I do, but, so I'm assuming then that ESPs will have roles within distance learning and, and DLA.
Yeah.
Need accommodations or whatever.
So we are working through the staffing models at, in the Distance Learning Academy. Again, we're looking at that just like it would a physical site, so the same staffing ratios, thinking about instructional ESPs at the elementary level, what does that look like based on the class sizes? I know Kate's team, as well as Kirsten Nicholson's team, in terms of special ed students and EL students who need those ESP supports, they're looking at those staffing pieces as well. So those, that full range of support will be a part of the Distance Learning Academy.
They'll get training, the ESPs will get training for their devices?
Yes.
Okay, I know that was technically three, but they were all kind of, okay.
They were all related, do you have another question, Jackie?
Wait, wait, I get another question?
Those are all related, I'm going to give you a, go for it.
You're giving me a go for it? Okay, well, this is also for Anthony, do you have hours for the DLA program?
We just started the conversation around that this week. Again, we've, we've got a framework, we're not ready to kind of share where that's out with, with yet, because we want to consult with the teachers next week. We're bringing a three-hour teacher group together on elementary and a three-hour secondary teacher group together to kind of confirm what that looks like. But one of the guiding principles that we have going into our conversations is to create a consistent start and end time, K through 12, knowing that that will help to support families if they have multiple students within that program. So that, that will hold as part of our guidance as we continue to move forward. Again, you know, from what I said earlier, my hope is by the end of next week, we'll have enough details ready to go, that the following week, we can send a communication to all registered families saying, here's the details of the program, giving some ideas of, again, when we might have an open house, what that's going to look like, and I've already been working with food and nutrition to get, you know, communication around food service for the Distance Learning Academy together as well for those families.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Director Muscata Jones. Superintendent McIntyre, when you look at making potential recommendations, changes or updates to the current plan, I've heard that we may need more time, there's still questions, many obviously, to be answered. Will we be prepared for the day that you suggested we open?
I want to make sure I understand your question, Mike, so I think.
You're not going to suggest that we open before we're prepared, is that correct?
Right, exactly, that's right, and that's kind of why you're hearing me, you're hearing me consider, we may need to start later, especially with, if, if we are able to, on this path, continue to believe that hybrid might be an option, or that's where we're at right now. I would pretty confidently say right now, we need that extra week. For one, here's one example why, there's many, you heard many tonight, but just giving a few extra days for families to sign up for DLA pushed us back a week, but we felt that was necessary to do, because we want to make sure every family had that opportunity and we didn't experience frustration that, that deadline came too soon. And we were hearing that earlier, right, so we had to extend that out. That along with many other things would probably cause us to look at that extra week to ensure training, all the safety preparedness that we need to do, especially when a lot of our ESPs come back right when school starts, we need the time to get them ready. So there's just a couple examples of implications of, of hybrid. If we were, you know, if things change and we're in, in the distance learning situation, we're probably able to start more on time, because there's not as much logistical things to get in place as there are with students and staff coming into the schools. And I'm just kind of giving you my sense of it right now, it's, it's a good question, that'll continue to evolve, like you said.
Okay. Regarding the Distance Learning Academy, there was a lot of questions or concerns that we were asking for full-year commitment. Tonight I heard that we have to manage up to 270 teachers that have requested accommodations and may need to be distance learning only, 5,000 students pulling them out of all of the classrooms, obviously, that's a huge logistical nightmare that you adequately explained tonight. So I do know that the district website does state that we will accommodate changes as possible, but nothing's guaranteed, can you expand upon that a little bit?
Yeah, go ahead, Anthony.
I was going to say, we're, we're working on the formalized process right now, but conceptually, what we would do is target trimesters. Families that would want to request a change would have to, 30 days prior to the start of the oncoming trimester, put in that request, so that we have time to identify who would want those transitions and understand if there's enough teachers in the building, can we safely put them back in? If we're in a hybrid model, are we going to go over 50% capacity? You know, if there's enough students coming in, do we need to now move a teacher at the trimester to create a new section? There's a lot of those staffing logistics to make sure a transfer can safely and actually happen. So that's, that's, we're going to be looking through at an application process, we can't guarantee, because there's a lot of staffing pieces and, and safety issues with MBH that we have to ensure we can follow by bringing students back in. If we can accommodate those requests to a certain degree, and we've got more students that are requesting a particular building or grade level than we have capacity for, then we will probably look towards a random lottery system to select students to make that transition back in.
Okay, so nothing is closed off, there are potential options, it is going to be very difficult to make it happen, but you are planning for it, so.
And Mike, just one, one other significant part of that, not only with scheduling and staffing, is transportation, we'll have to kind of basically redo the entire transportation routing system at each trimester, but you know, we, we welcome the challenge, we'll, we'll step up to that.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all that I had for questions. Any other board members would like to add an additional question, we'll do another round, or we can move on to the next three agenda items. Any questions?
I have some questions. A couple things, the toolkits, is that, is that only for DLA, or is it for, like, for everyone? I'm particularly wondering about like the parent one, just like, you know, how to use some of this stuff, like I mentioned last time, like CSO and, you know, some of the other apps that we have.
Jeremy, that's probably to you.
See, that's, that's an awesome question. The parent toolkit and everything we're trying to provide with respect to professional learning for families is for everyone. It doesn't matter if you are in the hybrid model, if you're engaged in distance learning, if you're a part of the Distance Learning Academy, we want to make sure that families have more professional learning experiences so that they can more effectively support their kids. That's all we're trying to do.
That's cool, I like that, I think that'd be, that would be really helpful, I love the toolkit, I love those toolkits that you're creating.
Kelsey, along with that, we're doing very intentional designing, that the same toolset that would be used in the Distance Learning Academy will also be used in hybrid, or if the district's in distance learning, or even if we come back in person, so we have some of those common universal connections when we talk about really supporting our families around this.
That's awesome. Okay, that kind of leads into my next question. So some clarity around, okay, so I understand what DLA is, and I understand it's really an online school, which that's what we're developing in a really short period of time. So like, let's say, you know, you know, we're in hybrid, but then due to numbers and data and whatnot, you know, we have to move into distance learning, what's like the difference in terms of, is it going to be like, will it be the same level of rigor academically in instruction?
Yeah, so it, it will be the exact same rigor and level of instruction, and we're being, again, very intentional to design the Distance Learning Experience, Academy Experience, that if the whole district were to go into distance learning, let's say, they are actually going to replicate that same model, the same pacing structure, the same rigor, the same design around the instructional pieces. So we, again, trying to build some of those universal experiences, so we aren't trying to create multiple models of distance learning.
Yeah.
So that, that, that will be true. Now, but what the difference will be, because it's designed as its own school, the course offerings are going to be different.
Sure.
So, you know, one of the questions that we get is, if we started in distance learning, can I do that and then move into the Distance Learning Academy? Well, the challenge is, is if you move into the Distance Learning Academy, it's like transferring between high schools, we can't guarantee that you're going to have the same matching course or the same level of electives. There may be a particular AP course that we can't offer in the Distance Learning Academy, because we don't have enough students enrolled and we don't have teacher staffing, so if a student started with an AP course and then moves into the Distance Learning Academy, now they're changing their course a third of the way through the school year.
Yeah, that makes sense. Um, and then, you know, I have a question, you know, with ma, with mask wearing, it's probably just, just something more comment, like, will there be some type of a policy around that? Like, not necess, obviously, there is like order to mandate, but like, let's say, a mask is like, like, do we have a protocol, will we have something to enforce it that's really clear to parents of like, you know, if it's like torn or, you know, whatever it is, whatever happens?
Yeah, a couple of things, we do have a, a protocol process in place that was actually required with our return to school from the Department of Ed, and so we actually got some guidance from MSBA, similar to policy language, but essentially it mapped out based on the Department of Health guidance and the executive order from the governor, and so that will be included in each one of the site safety plans. So all the teachers will be reviewing that and will know what that policy and the proceed, not policy, procedure is and protocol for masks. The other thing that, in, in terms of if a mask is torn, or if a student doesn't come to school and they forgot theirs, we will have plenty of disposable masks that we can give out for both students and staff. Part of that's coming from the state. If you recall, the governor's executive order, they gave free disposable masks for every student and staff, and so we'll have those, but we also have ordered some additional ones as well. So we are fully prepared to ensure that every student and staff member has a mask when they come into our building.
Yeah, I just think like, I know my daughter, my oldest, who's a sophomore, she's like, Mom, I promise I'm going to wear a mask all the time, I'm not going to touch anybody, but then of course, my younger ones are like, what? So, yeah, just what that, that is, and then I know, I mean, we, we serve so many students from special ed to, you know, little ones, and so just, I think that's probably going to be a point of interest for many families. So what, in terms of, you guys had mentioned this, I can't remember who mentioned this earlier, open houses. I know there's already been a couple of virtual, Kelly, you did, I know there's been a couple of virtual ones, I've heard from people that one school may be doing, you know, tours that, you know, that you have to sign up to do, and just like for incoming middle schoolers, kinders, or freshmen, you know, I'm assuming that's being worked on and communicated.
Maybe I could, I could jump, oh, go ahead, Kelly. Well, I was just going to say, Kelsey, thank you, because one of the things that we really are focusing on are those transitional years, like you said, our, our incoming kindergarteners, our incoming sixth graders and our incoming ninth graders, we know that, and, and brand-new students. So we know that students that have been in the buildings that, at, before at least have that familiarity with the building and can make their way around, which we know is a great part of students' anxiety, is just how do I get around the building and find my classrooms? So we're really trying to gear, if we can bring anybody in the, the buildings, are doing all they can for those transitional levels.
Yeah, and I would add, too, tomorrow, actually, we're meeting in conjunction with Dave Morlock, with the elementary principals, to really kind of talk through from a safety lens, so we have some guidelines and things that we're going to be working with the principals on as they begin to plan it out. So as you mentioned, they're generating all sorts of different ideas, which they should be, is, you know, they really want to engage the students, and as Kelly was saying, that really engage the littles, right, and, and the families, but what we want to do is to ensure that, that social distancing and all the different guidelines are in place, so it's a safe and, and a, and a positive, you know, experience for everyone.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, Director Simons, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly revisit the numbers on teachers and staff that had requested accommodations. Was 270 the teacher number or the total number?
There was 180 requests for an ADA accommodation, of which 129 were teachers, 129.
Okay, so it seems to me, if I look at the percent of teachers, the total population of teachers and students versus total population of students, it looks like it's running a little bit lower in terms of number of teachers who are requesting accommodation versus the total percent of students. I know, I know there's different ratios and everything, but because the question has been, will teachers who aren't feeling comfortable be able to be accommodated? So it, it feels like there's room in that number to think that might be possible, is that a fair assessment, not, not a confirmation, an assessment?
That's a fair assessment, I think that the question is, not feeling comfortable is not an accommodated request. So what I'm talking about specifically is an ADA medical request. We also had 57 teachers ask for non-ADA, so 57 teachers asked for a non-ADA, either leave or to work remotely.
That's 186.
Yep.
Okay. And then, in regard to the COVID information and cases, I really appreciate Superintendent McIntyre, that you're communicating with the state, I think you said the state epidemiologist, right? I, I just have to say this, I would be very cautious to, I, I want us to ensure that all of our students have the same access to the opportunity to access hybrid, and that fear or bias or concerns that don't override that constitutional right to the, to their education. So now, with that, we need to ensure every site is safe, we need to ensure that when we see and experience something different across our district, that we're ensuring that we have the right care and safety measures, that's just all I have to say, I really want to make sure that everybody has the same access across our district and that we're consulting with the experts and not injecting our, our, our thoughts into that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Director Simons. Uh, Director Douglas, do you have any final questions?
I do, thank you. Um, one of my questions is kind of along the lines of what Tanya was asking about. Um, as far as the numbers of teachers and the possibility that there might be a little bit of wiggle room for teachers who are wanting to teach in the distance learning model versus needing to. And I, I was just wondering, I don't know the specifics on the ADA requirement, but if a teacher has a member, a person living in their household who has some sort of extenuating circumstances, does that ADA requirement extend to them? Or is that completely like individual to the person and, um, not extend to their household?
Yeah, great question. ADA is for personal medical reasons. And we focused on the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, and there's a flyer on my two seven nine which outlines the six reasons for a leave. And three of them are related that are ADA accommodations. So it could be your own personal medical, um, concerns. If you have a, a person in your household for which you need to care for, that would be inclusive of the ninety-two requests that we had that are not ADA, because it's not your own personal health.
That's exactly what I was getting at, thank you. Um, another question I have is actually just a quick point of clarification. I believe it was Jeremy who was sharing, um, about, maybe it was Anthony, about the platforms, CSO, Schoology, and the age ranges or grade levels using those platforms. And I, um, I love the idea that we're going to be doing more consistency in that. But I wrote down that CSO was pre-K through five and Schoology was five through twelve. And I just wanted to know if that was correct because then five is both.
No, Heather, you are just about right.
It's okay to say I'm wrong.
No, pre-K through five is CSO and six through twelve is Schoology and...
Okay, thank you. I just misheard that.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. I'm glad that we're doing that. I think it's gonna be really helpful for a lot of people. Um, and I just have one more question, if that's okay, Chair Ossowski?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. Um, so my last question is, um, kind of similar to what Tanya was talking about. I'm wondering, uh, Cory, how, um, we're getting recommendations, of course. We have an executive order, which is from the governor and partnered with the Minnesota Department of Health. How closely are we also considering, um, the American Academy of Pediatrics and the PDC recommendation in addition to these other entities?
Well, um, I, here's how I'd respond to that. I think we've relied on our health departments to consider those things as part of their guidance for all of us. So they look at the research and be determining their health department guidance and the educational department guidance. We don't, in the order or in the guidance to us, those are not explicit things that we can use for decision making as, uh, outside of the, uh, framework, I guess, or the models. So I, how I understand it is they've looked at all the research. I just was at our superintendent's, uh, meeting Wednesday morning and the state health, uh, department person really kind of covered all the various different research articles and studies that they had as kind of the primary backbone behind their recommendations. So that deeper dive, um, background foundational, you know, evidence is, is inherent in the guidance they're giving us, if I'm understanding your question correctly.
Yep, that's right. Thank you. That's all I needed.
Okay, thank you, uh, Director Muscato Jones. Follow-up for two.
Or five. Um, so I, I saw in our, um, in the agenda that there was going to be, um, something about early learning besides just the childcare. Did I totally miss? What are, what's going on with, um, VPK and Four Star and ECFE? And how's that working? Cause that's a completely different animal. And so it's, you can't, you, you can't say a four-year-old is like a ten-year-old. So, you know, I'm speaking to the choir, Carrie, go for it.
I can give you a quick update on those. So VPK, we're closely monitoring enrollment numbers, Jackie writes. So those are similar more to our kindergarten students, right? VPK and Title I. So looking at those enrollment counts as they come in and our enrollment center is monitoring that. Um, we're actually meeting on Monday to look at, um, potentially, um, looking at adjusting and how do we make sure those classes are well, um, ready to go for the first day of school when that's there. Um, ECF and E, um, registration is open. The lottery for those classes starts August nineteenth. So, um, families do have the opportunity to sign up for different classes currently through, um, Early Childhood and Family Ed Department as well. So looking at some of those early learning preschool options. Um, Sally, um, this morning shared, um, a lot of our, um, in-person classes. And then our New Nature Playground classes are where we're seeing some of the most interest right now in those early four-year-olds and, um, early learning classes as well. Um, and then in regards to Four Star, right, so that's really more of a childcare model, right? So we're really, um, engaging with our building admins and looking at the space in those buildings. Right now, our current registration numbers, we're hopeful, would fit into those spaces. And right now they do, that we'd be able to offer those families five-day-a-week care, similar to like, kinder care up the road, um, for them as well. So, um, constantly monitoring those. Um, none of our classes are at capacity right now in Four Star because those families have dropped. We have not filled them. We have quite a few families on a waitlist, so we could fill them. Um, but also wanna be very mindful of what, um, those numbers are in those spaces as well, um, for our staff and for those families and students, um, too. So our à la carte model has many moving parts with our four-year-olds, um, and our earliest orders.
And I know our Early Childhood Special Ed was touched on a bit by, uh, Kate. I don't know if Kate, if there's anything specific you felt like you missed that you would wanna add or if you felt like you covered it.
Oh, Jackie, was there something specific about ECSE that you had a question about? Or did you, did my presentation just go by in a blur?
No, 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 I was, I was speaking more of EC and FE. I just am old and I say ECFE still. So it sounded, I'm sure it sounded like ECSE. I do have a question for you, Kate, though. Um, I had a couple of parents whose students were in assessment when COVID hit. And so they're kind of in this weird, you know, um, place. I'm assuming that that's gonna get picked up right away, right?
Yes, we have a team this summer pick up, um, mostly, uh, the students that were coming from ECSE to kindergarten. Uh, we did have a team do, uh, about thirty-eight evaluations this summer. And other than that, anybody else who was in, that was in a school and going to the same school, those evaluation teams will be picking those up immediately, um, once school starts, yes.
What happens if that student is in DLA?
They will be assessed. That is, yeah.
I, I, I just, you know, I had to ask the question for the people asking me. So I knew that that would be the answer. I, I appreciate that. Um, cause I know we wanna take care of our kids, for sure. Um, another question I have is, um, when will sta- I have, there's a bazillion questions from staff coming and I am not gonna be asking those questions, um, in the interest of time right now. Um, not because I don't love staff, cause I'm a teacher and you know, um, how that goes. But I think in the interest that there are a lot of staff who are used to spending, I'm just gonna, I'm just, I'm a teacher, right? And, um, I, at this point, have a whole bunch of my things finished already for when school starts. And we have teachers sitting there freaking out, not knowing when they're going to be able to do that. So if we can give them even, uh, this is where you're gonna find out more of the details of things like, how are we gonna handle things on the recess, you know, down the playground and all those, is there's kind of like a... We're gonna try to have a good chunk of that done by X amount of time or is there something we can give them?
So we have talked about, uh, Jackie, we're not there yet, but we've talked about with some of these new dollars, whether we can provide optional opportunities to come in early. You know, we still gotta, I guess, adhere to our contract language. Um, a- along with if we are in this model, you pair that up with starting the year a week later. Now we've created a little more adequate space to prepare everyone. But we haven't had a chance to really fully vet that out, but we are looking at all those options if they're available.
Okay, and then, um, Michael, I have questions about, um, Parents and Parent Academy. I'm guessing that you might be answering some of those maybe during your presentation. So I'm gonna wait till then and if you don't, I'll, I'll ask them then, if that's okay. Um, I just, I, I, I have one more thing and then I'm, I'm finished and you're welcome. I'm just kidding, sorry. Um, I, I've been, as you know, this has been really tough, um, a tough time as a teacher and a school board member to have to navigate all this. And I know that all of you are, are feeling that same type of pressure because you're on, you know, sixteen, eighteen-hour days. Um, I wanna make sure that whatever decisions we make, that we are feeling like our families and our staff are feeling, um, safe. And I know that Cory says we're not gonna go unless we have safe, unless we are safe. And I super appreciate that. I am also wondering if it's time to take a quick survey to see where people are at now because things have changed quite a bit since the end of the school year when we, when we surveyed. And I am not, I know you are working constantly. I'm not asking for a full-on, like, just two or three questions, boom, done, kind of a thing.
That's a tough question. We feel like we've surveyed the, our, our community a lot and there is some sense of fatigue with that. Um, and, uh, that's on the community or parent side. On the teacher's side, we've been working with EMO a little bit more. They, they're doing some surveying of their own, which is helpful. So we don't have to replicate anything. HR's done some surveying too. So, um, I do think, Jackie, we will need to do that at some point regardless of what we start the year with. Cause as we progress through the year, we gotta have that continual feedback loop. I'm not clear on when the right time for that is and whether we can pivot fast enough, so to speak, with, um, some of the information too. So you are absolutely right. Things are happening very quickly and the shelf life, I think, of our surveying efforts is shorter than it ever spent, has ever been. So we've been wrestling with this, Jeremy and I, and has taught, have coming back and forth, Barb and I too, on, you know, knowing is that, is that valuable enough, right, um, to, and, and well, what's our response rate is gonna be? Because we have done so many surveys recently. I don't know if Barb or, um, Jeremy, uh, have any additional thoughts, but we, we are kind of just currently wrestling with that, I guess, is my best answer. I wish I had a better one.
And are we, um, I know it's, it's been, it's been a long night and I may have missed this. Um, if we find that there are lo- there's local data, um, that puts us in a different learning mode, but maybe not on another side of our district, how do we make a decision on, for the whole district?
Well, I think that's the question of the night right now. Um, uh, that's the challenge. And I really, I, before I try to come to our team and to you with a final decision, I wanna make sure we have every single piece of information that we can have up to that point. I don't think we have the operational capacity to have part of the district doing one thing and part of the district doing another. We just don't simply have the resources or the, or the, all the things that would, it would take. So we're likely needing to be in a space where, you know, we're pretty much doing something uniform across the system. Maybe by level, you've seen the, you know, the, the next level in the model is elementary in and, and, uh, secondary and distance learning. So elementary and hybrid, secondary and distance learning, that does create some operational challenges for a district our size. Um, so we're still unpacking whether we can pull that off or whether if, if we got to that kind of point, are we looking at distance learning for ev- everyone? Because that's what we can do successfully, like said, like it was said earlier. And a little bit of that comes with every day, we're a little further down our path of how strong is our planning and how well are we gonna be able to implement things? And then we're getting more data here this week and next week too. So, um, you asked a great question that I'm just buying a little time on to see what have we, we have everything we can get to make that decision, but likely it's gonna be something uniform across the district because of the, our capacity.
Um, I'm wondering if, um, we've been able to go out to communities that may not have received our survey and kind of gotten a feel of where they are while we're doing this awesome outreach that, um, Barb, I'm just amazed at how much you've been able to get through. And I feel like you need, um, more support for translation and getting communications out because your plate is extremely full right now. But have we been able to gather any, um, EL voices or, um, other communities?
Yeah, Rev, are you still, like, I'm looking for my...
Did you go to sleep, Mike? Rev?
Rev's there, uh, yeah.
No, I'm still here. So the, you know, the, the surveys were sent out to all our communities. There's been additional efforts. And I think Cory, you originally shared in some of the data that we had, um, differences of opinions when we broke things, not by race, we broke things, not by different group. I have heard from various members of our community, um, even with our EL Academy, right? We had several families that wanted their students to be there and receive these services. You have other families who did not, right? So, um, I can't speak definitively. I, I do know that the conversations I've had, that there's tremendous concerns with health risks. I've heard that, um, echoed to me. Um, and, uh, a tremendous concern with timeliness of communication. Uh, we are, we are getting communications out, but we're not getting them out at the same pace that we're getting our English communications out and, and necessarily in the same meaningful way. So there's obviously tremendous challenges with all of this. Um, and we're, we're not, we're very mindful of that. And, and yet at the same time, back to capacity and resources, I'm excited that we are, like I shared with you in my brief, we are up, uh, bringing in a person to specifically help take over the coordinating of our translation interpretation services. I think that'll be a tremendous benefit to, uh, Kirsten and our BAs and Barb. Um, and that, but that's not twenty more interpreters, right? That, that are gonna be sitting there on the clock, um, not gonna work out. So we're still gonna be faced with consistent challenges.
But I would like to comment, um, living in Brooklyn Park and being engaged in the city, um, I think this is, uh, an important topic, um, and, and we've had conversations. I provided some information to Superintendent McIntyre and, um, and, and I know he's, uh, working on this. Uh, staying in close partnership with the city of Brooklyn Park and being sure that we're well-connected and hearing directly from the city who, um, can also provide perspective on the residents is important. So this is something that we're, we, I believe we need to stay closely synced up in, um, with, with the city as well and city, uh, officials.
Also Cory or Ron, you can, for, in transportation interpretation, that's covered under CARES too, I believe, for additional support.
Oh, you took my question, Kelsey.
Oh.
I only had one.
Sorry.
I'll, I'll let Ron respond.
Hey, can you, I, I apologize. I missed the first part of the question, Kelsey. Can you say the first part of the question again?
In response to the, I know that, well, I, pretty much a lot, many jurisdictions have this, have a, um, a lag in, in translation and in interpretation. And so I just said, can't CARES funding, um, we could have used that, apply that toward CARES funding?
Yep, certainly, uh, so the ninety percent Esar funds, um, we definitely can, uh, use it for translation services. And in fact, we, um, w- we took part of, uh, what we did this summer, um, and applied it to some of those CARES funds. Um, also the new funding as well, Coronavirus Relief Fund, um, specifically calls out translation services, uh, as being applicable. So we definitely could fit it in there as well.
Okay.
And I would suggest that we are doing some of that, right? We're looking at our Talking Point software, some of our other pieces. So some of the additional things that we're looking at, we're looking at all our resources. And I appreciate Ron for helping us, uh, think through that and find ways to address the needs.
All right, thank you, everybody. Uh, Cory, would you wanna wrap up this piece? I mean, we do have three more items on, on the agenda. If there's anything else you wanna get out there?
No, I think, and I really appreciate the thoughtful questions of everyone in the team, um, um, doing the best. No, I think, and I really appreciate the thoughtful questions of everyone in the team doing the best they can. You know, I think you'll find we have answers to some, and when we don't, we'll say we don't, and we're working on getting it, right? It's just, that's the fast pace we're, we're working through. So, you know, I'm now giving the board a daily update because it's that, that fast and furious with the way things are evolving. So I appreciate all the thoughtfulness of all this. And, and I think we can all together, there's so many questions out there trying to help steer people toward the information is. Because I've found myself, if I track things down on my own, I probably could have did a better job just steering people where it's at and it's reliable instead of myself taking a lot of extra steps. So I think, as staff are coming back, there are principals in our departments, and all the information on the website is, has been helpful. So that just took time to get out there. But thank you very much for all the thoughtfulness on this, and I can say, moving into the next agenda items, we're gonna try to be efficient.
The, is there any thought of, of holding one off until next week if we still hold the special meeting? Or, you know, I think some of these are still some meaty things to do.
What I'd like to do, I can give you an update on the strategic planning, you know, offline too, with everyone. That's just more of an update. And really, the short story there is we're so focused on opening school. We're keeping this moving, but it's gonna be slightly delayed and still moving, but not the focus for the next few weeks.
That makes sense, okay. I'm fine with moving that off the agenda and going into the monitoring reports because that, that information actually goes into us talking about the strategic planning and where some of this is.
Yeah, so unless you want a short break, I'll, we'll just transition into the community engagement plan. Any others on the team who are not a part of that, feel free to, you can end your night.
And let's, let's take, it's nine sixteen, let's start at nine twenty-three. And, and seven minutes, and everybody, if you can, mute yourself because we'll probably still be live. So, thank you.
Now, when I take the sound out, it kills everybody here, so they're, just the only reason I have to have the sound up there is so we can hear them. We're communicating, so when I take my soundboard out, it's not going out. They might be able to hear each other. Yeah, it's, it's still going on. But it's just, it's what you see, that with no sound. So, but on a computer, the people in the meet, they can still talk and hear each other, but it's not going out on Granicus. Yeah, I know, I know. I mean, there's, this is a unique time, there's just a lot of stuff, but they want answers for things that aren't answers for yet. There's, they're grinding away, they're grinding. Yeah. And we'll never answer, we'll never come up with answers to satisfy all the parents. I mean, that's, frankly, I'm happy, really glad I don't have school-aged kids right now. So, okay, so I gotta be right, I'll bring them back at nine twenty-three anyway. So, so there's still, so we need to have that, our camera on so he can see that. That's how he'll cue himself. Don't need the, don't need the mic on. Case of the munchies, I got nothing left to munch on. I'm so glad I'm not working tomorrow.
Hopefully, I can just come in for a couple hours, because I was supposed to take out Monday and Tuesday.
Oh, yeah.
And now they got a little better work session next week.
So what's that one supposed to be about?
Board agenda planning and stuff.
Glad he's skipping this one part of the... I would guess these next two parts are much shorter. I know. Getting enough input from all of our constituents, all of our stakeholders.
It's nine twenty-one, so in honor of Michael Leehan's background, that's a two-minute warning.
Hey, Michael, it's Brian, I'm back, by the way.
Perfect, do you, Ron, do you lead off?
Sure, I can do that.
Sure.
I'm back too.
All right.
No, they can't. They should not be able to hear, they can hear each other.
All right, it's nine twenty-three. Sherry, Randy, if you want to start kicking us off and give us a countdown, or however you want to do it.
No, no, only within the Google Meet. If you're in the Google Meet, you'll be hearing each other, but what's going on on Granicus is different.
I'll just queue off the TV background.
I don't know how that's possible. I have my, my soundboard down to nothing. They could hear before the meeting, I mean, anytime we're trying to communicate with them. They shouldn't be able to hear anything now.
And literally, I was sitting there, Randy was in there, and they're talking.
Are they hearing something now with this one? Because I, I don't know how they would.
Hey, Michael, you spoke really fast last time, just a little FYI.
I might speak faster this time.
I do the same thing when I'm nervous, so I just wanted to give you kind of a heads up.
All right. So, yeah, Randy, Sherry, whenever, just let us know.
It's on.
All right, thank you, everybody, welcome back from the brief break. Next up on the agenda is a monitoring report and update on family and community engagement plan. And that's gonna be Brian Severson Hall and Michael Leehan. Gentlemen, it's all yours.
All right, good evening, everyone, great to be together. Michael and I are excited to present an update on the work around our family and community engagement plan. If you recall, back in June, we did a presentation to the board and took your recommendation and appreciated your enthusiasm for some of the things we brought forward. So we're gonna give you an update on what's happened since, essentially since July, when, when Michael started in his new position. So we conducted interviews, individual board interviews, also conducted an interview with Cory, and then took some time talking to the Brooklyn Bridge Alliance team that does a lot of work around youth voice and involving youth in decision-making. So we wanted to get their perspective and hear about some of the efforts they did this summer. And I know that even as a result of that discussion, Michael ended up being a guest speaker on one of their virtual youth summits that they were holding for thirteen to eighteen-year-olds, essentially middle school and high schoolers. So the action steps that we've taken, we already identified our stakeholder group, so kind of a task force. And we conducted our first meeting on August fourth, and how many people did we have on that, Michael? I forgot, was it like fifteen or so?
Yeah, right around fifteen.
Yeah, so we, and they're very enthusiastic about this work. They were excited to share some of their highlights from some of their site and departmental work last year as well as some of their thinking on how to engage people for items like some of you brought up earlier around starting back at school, for example. We synthesized some of our interview data with you as board members. We researched and reviewed engagement models, and we're getting excited on having diverse sets of employees and engage them around engagement needs that they also have. I think the next slide is a, yeah, here, these are the interview themes from school board members. So we wanted to give you kind of the high-level themes that came about from all of you and, and some areas that absolutely intersected with one another and other areas where you had kind of your own individual theme. So we had definitely some intersection with student voice, currently enrolled families. We had fewer board response on broader community, but we had some board members who wanted to make sure engagement incorporated those who aren't enrolled in our school district. Some intersection around appearing at larger community events, and also some intergenerational engagements, which was interesting to hear from you. Some kind of critical statements that you all made are, it'd almost be like your slogan, is how I took it when I, when I brought it with Michael, is to be one district, to have connections with community influencers to help us on our engagement work. A philosophy of relationships with balanced power with those that we're engaging with. Some exit interviews, whether that's staff, but primarily families who choose not to stay in our school district. And then also, this one was pretty much, all of you had this thread, areas of focus aligned with a specific result in mind. So that's as, about as concisely as we can summarize our individual interviews because as you know, we all, all of you took the entire hour that we set up, and, and we had rich conversations, so we appreciate that. Michael, do you want to do the next action steps from here?
Sure, absolutely. And it was really great to sit down, obviously, with each of you, and as Brian alluded to, there's a lot of passion. And I think organically, due to our reality, our social reality right now, there's naturally people who are coming forward, that notion of community leaders and lending a voice. I would even say the opportunity that we had to engage different employees and different groups with Freedom Schools, it, it lent itself an opportunity to be in relationship with our community, and that's critically important right now. No matter what the venue looked like or what the venue is, there's certainly opportunities to lend a listening ear and be in community. Some of our action steps looking forward is that we continue to have engagement in sites and improvement plans. So we're going to continue to work in partnership with our sites and give them some ideas. We talked a little bit earlier, and Steve alluded to the fact that we're going to come together with some principals and just talk about what does orientation look like. Earlier this week, sent out a note to some of our principal leaders just to hear a little bit of what they've been doing so far. So we know that Patrick Smith at Maple Grove Middle School and Bill Cundig at Oakfield, they've been doing some listening sessions with families. I think Bill has done two, Patrick most recently has done one, and that was received very, very well by the community. Also, looking at Brooklyn Middle, they've doing some virtual tours and engaging families in that manner. And Osseo Middle School is looking at On Board You, which is kind of a, a jump off with, for families and students, and a lot of colleges and universities use that. So there's some really intentionality that's showing up right now to make sure that we're engaging our families and being in relation with them. One of the pieces that we've seen models around not only our state but out of state is that town halls, that for us to sit down and facilitate a conversation, potentially allow our communities to ask the questions that are, that are burning to them, or just to sit in community and share what we've been doing, what does this process look like for us? How intentional have we been? And certainly knowing that their scholar is at the center of our decision-making process. Their safety of their scholars at the center of our decision-making process. And then we'll continue to build and foster, foster a stakeholder team. As we talked about, we had about fifteen individuals come forward in our first meeting. It was probably disproportionately with some of our District Two Seventy-Nine staff. We were not able to get some of our parenting community voices. However, we have identified them for on our team, so we'll continue to move forward, encourage, engage those voices. We also know that there's some organic groups that are coming forward, whether that be on Facebook, whether that of teachers or community members, and we want to make sure that we're in partnership with them as there's a critical perspective that they hold. So those are some of our next action steps that we're looking at in the very near future. Now, Ostafi, I know this is gonna excite you. We were able to identify some funds for a net zero proposal that would allow us to jump this department off a little bit faster than what our initial timeline that Brian and I shared back in June. This net zero proposal, as I alluded to, that we were able to identify and reallocate some existing funds within expenditures that we have in the, in the district. As such, it's gonna be a launch for this school year. We have a proposal with positions already identified, working with Cory and Cabinet to really vet and make sure that, as we think about what our strategic plan is gonna look like, to make sure that we can align this priority result, this priority outcome meaningfully, to make sure that we achieve the deliverables that are set forth. So we're really excited about that, and then I have myself on there, but it's certainly gonna be a joint partnership, whether it would be with Brian, certainly with Barb Olson, and all the information that she's been getting in. We want to make sure that we have our collective brilliance put together and that the information that we all glean is going to productively move our work forward. So that is a really short, five to seven-minute presentation update about where we are with our family and community engagement.
Very good, thank you, Michael. I appreciate the commentary about the budget. Board members, any, any questions for Michael or Brian?
Um, so when, you know, I know you, I appreciate, I really appreciate this. This is, I think, the moment we've been waiting for to see, you know, what the, what this next steps are around this engagement piece. And, um, so I think this is a great jump-off point. And so in terms, so right now, we know that social media has captivated our, much of our district community, and so there's a lot of discussion, a lot of interpretation of kind of what this district is doing, what we're focused on. I do think people really received the virtual, you know, meetings with Principal Smith and, and to have that Q and A with him. So do you envision that this virtual town hall or, you know, the virtual even, maybe a Q and A session with Superintendent McIntyre or something with that? Do you think that is something that is part of the plan as, you know, over the next... So do you envision that this virtual town hall or, and, you know, the virtual even maybe a Q and A session with Superintendent McIntyre or something with that, do you think that is something that is part of the plan as, you know, over the next month, I mean, as people probably have questions, because I do think there's some, I agree with Superintendent McIntyre and Barb, I mean, I, I do think there's some fatigue around, you know, the surveying, but I don't think there's fatigue around that FaceTime, well, that's what everybody, I think, is really, unfortunately, due to COVID, we haven't been able to have that, you know, as much, but more and more, you know, businesses or government institutions are just doing virtual type Q and As or sessions, so do you see that happening even as we prepare for the start of the year even more?
You know, definitely, and we haven't committed, Kelsey, to how we would deliver that yet, but that was one of the ideas that we would do, because I think a, a couple of the things we saw, there's certainly kind of the town hall Q and A style, which I think for sure works really well for sites, but I believe it was Dallas, Texas schools, they did some great kind of almost webinars that went a little deeper on a particular subject area of interest, right? So like, there might be more of a webcast that focus, focuses only on health and safety, and there'll be another one the next day on Distance Learning Academy, for example, so you might have an option of eight different ones, and let's say the Severson Hall family is interested in health and safety, I might choose to only jump in on that one, but I don't really have as much of an interest on the Distance Learning Academy, because I'm going to go sign up for the hybrid model, that would, that's as well as I could summarize it, so I think we're kind of looking at a couple intriguing ways that some other school districts engage families that were very different from each other, but also all looked effective, you know?
And I just, my last, my own comment on this, I just really appreciate the outreach to, really, like you guys were saying, a lot of our even organizations within the community and some of our trusted influencers, and because I do think, you know, we can partner with other jurisdictions, the cities, but sometimes you got to go even deeper, because I think that there are, you know, organizations that really kind of have a really strong pulse, so I know with like Brooklyn Bridge Alliance, you guys have been partnering with them, and they've done some with that youth summit, I mean, that, it was, it's really cool, so I'm really excited about this, thank you so much.
Alright, any other questions, directors?
Well, as, um, sorry, Tanya, where are you going to go?
You can go ahead.
Okay, um, so as, okay, one of my licenses is in parent education, so you know this is a, this is a big hairy exciting deal for me. I just want to say thank you, and I'll just echo what Kelsey and I'm sure Tanya is going to say, and I'm sure Mike and Heather will all say that we are very excited about this and going forward. I'm right now thinking about my families, much like some of the families we have, who are, who may not have resources to do online activities or webinars and all sorts of town halls, all that, and may not speak English, and I'm worried about the beginning of the year and there's these parent, the parent toolkit, or I keep forgetting which one you call which thing, but all the, all the awesome resources that Anthony and Jeremy are working together to get out for families, and so that, to me, I think, can sometimes be overwhelming if you're in a place in your life that you're just living day-to-day or, or trying to figure that out. So I'm wondering if there's any thought of through parents, through this model or any other avenue through the district of how we can reach some of those families, maybe even with our BAs, or however, we can do that to kind of sit them through, help them through, navigate some of those things before school gets rocking and rolling?
Certainly, I, that's going to be part of this, I think that as we look to engage, obviously, there's a lot of studies out there, and you know this to be true, Jackie, that when you engage families, student achievement goes up, right? And so that's the truth that we know that is a reality that we want to make sure that we leverage. But not only that, we also need to be mindful of the emotional well-being of our families, and so with ensuring that our parents are informed, and when they're informed, they're going to be in a good place to send off their best, their best and their brilliance to us on a daily basis. So there's ample, ample opportunities to really leverage our relationships with our families, and it's not only with our scholars, but certainly with that, with families as well with the wraparound, so that is a high priority with this as well.
Alright, thank you, Michael, Director Simons.
No, just echoing the, you know, appreciation that we're getting this off the ground, this is one of those great things that all of us have had strong desire to get moving on, so I appreciate that there's still momentum on this, even in, in kind of this time where we need to have our priorities really focusing on getting our schools open, this complements that well, just, you know, as, as a Rotarian, and we've got a lot of engagement by the Rotary Clubs across the district, right now, there's just so many groups that are like, how can I help, what can I do, like, where can we fill the gap? So just keep thinking about how like the community can wrap its arms around us right now, and there, where that might be that opportunity in the, in the near future, as we kind of get out of the challenge, the immediate challenges and the immediate needs in, in this effort, so thanks, and I look forward to continuing the progress on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Simons, Director Douglas, any questions or comments?
I don't have any questions or comments, that's just trying to, you know, pretty much everyone's already said everything, so, thank you.
Alright, thank you, and I, I really, as I said, it's been said three or four times already, so I'm not going to say it again, so we'll keep this shorter. The, the ability to, a, as you said, Michael, the ability to communicate with our parents and get them engaged is going to help all of our students, and, and that's one of the biggest things that I've been advocating for is better parental involvement with their students, and we need to start that and jumpstart that with better parental involvement with the district, so I appreciate you doing this, and I, I am looking for very good things from this, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, and Brian and Michael, thanks for the presentation, I appreciate it, we'll move on to the next one, which is the update on the Equity Context Analysis Process, and we go right back to Michael.
I'll introduce this for you, Michael, just a little bit, so you can catch your breath just for a second. So board members, you know, with this new administrative structure with, with the Assistant Superintendent Equity and Achievement with Michael's role here, this gave us a launching pad to begin to partner with Midwestern Plains Equity Assistance Center, as we've looked at over the last few months, to how do we take our current practice and develop it into the next level? So specifically, one of the services that the MAP Center can provide to us is this Equity Context Analysis Process to give us kind of an overview and review of our current practices, identify opportunities for growth, and how we can advance it, our equity work in support equity-oriented strategic planning efforts as well, as well as some data progress monitoring and assessment activities that can come with that. So that's my kind of foundational piece, I asked Michael just to give a quick overview of how far we've come in just the next, last probably eight weeks, and a preview of what's coming as, as we get this ECAP process started, thanks, Michael.
Superintendent McIntyre, I think we're done, I think that just goes, goes it out at this point, but thank you, before I get started, I guess I would be remiss if I didn't lift up Lisa Hartman, who is my partner through this process, she has done a phenomenal job just staying connected with all this going on, my schedule and so forth, she is a very talented individual and a, and a great partner to have through this process. As Cory alluded to, this is a, a process that we're undertaking, we want to do a self-study, we want to make sure that the, the lens in which we see our work and see our brilliance of our scholars is in a meaningful way that can ultimately reveal some of the blind spots inherently that, I was going to say we all, but I'll speak for myself, that I carry, and so how is this process going to help reveal those blind spots to make sure that we are providing equitable and meaningful opportunities for our scholars? The outcome of this presentation is, is relatively short, but just for you to have an understanding of what this ECAP process is and what it looks like, and then obviously, understanding the timeline of our work, what you'll find is that we really did an aggressive timeline, because we want to make sure by the turn of the year that we have some really, really good information, which is going to help inform our staffing season, which is going to help inform some of our priority results that we have, and some of our building into the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. The sculpting sequence of this experience is ultimately that there's three goals, that there is the, the ECAP process, that's one of them, there's a strategic planning based on the results of the ECAP, and then there's the Equity Leadership Training. So the Equity Str, I'm sorry, the Strategic Planning based on the results of the ECAP, that's what's going to launch us into where, where are our studies, where are our gaps, where are our voids, where are our opportunities ultimately for growth? A lot of words on this page, but essentially, there is going to be four sessions with the ECAP process. In between the third and the fourth process, session, that we're doing some data collection, and that teams will be administering stakeholder surveys and gathering data following walkthrough protocols in identified buildings, that's how we're going to come up and collect this data and then move our work forward from here. As I alluded to, this is, that's the data collection work that we're going to walk through. The strategic planning, which if you remember, that's obviously goal number two, is that there's going to be three sessions, and this is where we come together, and we have identified a group already of individuals who's going to sit in partnership as we go through this work, but essentially, this is providing assistance, increasing the capacity of select staff in the analysts and strategic planning of the district's equity efforts, right? It's, it's that reflective piece about how are we doing, and why are we doing, what are we doing, and is it working ultimately? And then this is going to be a virtual consulting, really, so we have alignment, and we have a, a consultant that we're working with, we're sharing the data with them, we're sharing with them kind of where are our challenges, so we're also going to be able to speak about this launch of school, where were our gaps and potentially thinking it through an equity lens, who was unintentionally harmed during this process, and make sure that we have a meaningful infrastructure to move forward. In this leadership training, this is the, is the other goal, and this is going to be four sessions, and ultimately, the goal is to increase the capacity of Osseo Area School staff, and then obviously, there's going to be a coordinator to oversee the equity-focused initiatives and the district development of a se, a select team of administrators, district leaders, and building-level champion leaders during this time. As such, there's also, we, next month, next Wednesday, we have our first meeting, and that's going to be the Cabinet level Superintendent McIntyre, and we're starting at that time. That is the quick overview of the ECAP process.
Two quick points, thank you, Michael, just to get this off the ground, if everyone's hearing this, help me. Two quick things, the process is not, I want, just want to remind everyone, it's not an audit, because someone's not coming in to do an audit of us, they're giving us the tools to evaluate ourselves, that's a, a very big distinction, and so the MAP Center gives us the tools to evaluate our own context and where we need to go next, and then at the end, resulting in a, a multi-year plan moving forward. So the results of this will give us a very, very articulated set of goals and measures that will map out over a course of time, so really moves us into action. So with that, I just want to thank Michael for grabbing onto this very quickly, actually got him started on before you probably really actually officially started, just to get this moving, and, and thanks again to Lisa Hartman as well to keep that moving while Michael supports all those other responsibilities, so thank you, Chero Staffi.
Alright, thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, Michael, and let's open it up to one question, if we want to go through that, I know Michael gave a fairly high-level overview, and, and we'll get into details as his work progresses, so with that in mind, let's see, Director Simons, any questions or comments?
No, thank you for the update, look forward to the continued work in the space.
Thank you, Director Dossel-Maltin.
I, I, same, I agree with Director Simons, I'm really looking forward to this as it progresses and really support the, and I'm excited about the foundation that you've laid so far for this, so.
Thank you, Director Douglas.
Thank you, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Director Muscata-Jones.
I'm also looking forward to seeing how this all works and, and leveraging the talents of our staff to make things better, I appreciate it.
Alright, thank you, and thank you, Michael, for the effort and, and for giving us the overview this evening, and with that, I'm the last person to stand between us and adjournment, so I'm not going to stand in the way anymore. With that, this meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody, have a good night.